All right, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, if you just want to wave me over.
Yes.
There we go. All right. Call to order. I hereby announce pursuant to Section 5 of the Oakland Public Meetings Act that adequate notice of this meeting has been transmitted on October 25th, 2025 by the Board Administrative Officer to the Asbury Park Press. Excuse me?
Louder!
By the Board Administrative Officer to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, the Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meeting room and in the entrance in Town Hall, all pursuant to Section 13 of the Oakland Public Meetings Act. Roll call.
Mr. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Ackerson?
Here.
Mr. Romanom? Absent. Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Mann?
Here.
Mr. Emma? Absent. Mr. King?
Yeah.
Ms. Plausas?
Yeah.
Mr. Silberman?
Here.
Mr. Dorsey? Absent. Mr. Bell? Absent. I was just informed that recording is not going through on my end. It shows that it does, but let me double check. On Facebook page. Yeah, we're on Facebook Live, so we're good.
We're good? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our military, police, and first responders. Thank you. First order of business, we have minutes from October 21st, 2025.
Scott, I think we'll do that at the end. We'll do that and resolutions, housekeeping at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing, PB number 2025G, 23 Main Street Urban Renewal LLC. The applicant has applied to the Board for the property located at 23 Main Street, Home Dell, New Jersey, Block 13, Lot 15, which is the former Vonage Headquarters, the property which, and which is owned by 23 Main Street Propco LLC, an affiliate of the applicant, for preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary major site plan, and final major site plan for Phase 1, known as AZURA at Home Dell. Do I got to read the bottom one, Irene? The final agenda? No? Okay.
That's in case we want to add last minute minutes on resolutions. Thank you.
Before we get started, I'm going to, we have a big showing of people here today. I just want to remind everyone that we've already had their witnesses up to deal with the architectural, I think, and some other issues, I forget, engineering, and the portion of that is closed for questions. They have new witnesses here, and we'll be able to ask questions to the new witnesses, and at the end, we will allow for public comment, as we typically do. With that being said, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and we thought it might be good to just give a little recap of what we discussed last time, just so everyone knows what's going on.
Certainly, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman, Board members, members of the public. My name's Carl Kim for law firm McMiniman Scotland Embalment. On behalf of the applicant, as the Chairman indicated, we were previously hearing.
Is he here? Is he back here?
Well, it's the best we can do.
How's that better? No, this is working. It's getting closer.
Yeah. Well...
It's loud. Down to the floor.
Is that better?
No.
That's as loud as it's going to go. I apologize.
It's better when you hear your head. Stand up. Stand up.
So, Chairman, as you indicated, we were here on September 30th. We had our architect and engineer testify. We went through all the review reports received at that time. Since that time, we received two other review reports, one from the Environmental Commission dated October 20th, which was largely covered through prior testimony, will also be covered through testimony this evening. We also received the review letter from the County Planning Board. We can comply with that. There's two issues we just wanted to make the Board aware of. One request to the county was to have a widening dedication along Main Street of an additional 10 feet on the front of the property, which would include the five-acre plus piece we're donating to the town, plus the front entrance of the property. If it's a right-of-way that creates certain setback issues and things of that nature, or could, we've discussed with the county having an easement in lieu of a right-of-way, which would not create those issues. The county's been amenable to that, but we're waiting for revised review letter. So I guess the upshot is, if we're able to do an easement, there are no issues with lot sizes, impervious coverage, any kind of the bulk variances. If the county decides not to give us an easement and requires a right-of-way, we still have no variances required. We double-checked, the size of the lots will comply, there'll be no setback issues, no impervious coverage issues. It'll just be a smaller lot size, so if that is required by the county, we'll submit revised plans showing those revised calculations. The other issue in the county report that we have spoken to them about, and again preliminarily, they said they will accommodate, they had suggested that the parcel that we're going to donate to the township have easement between that property and the main entrance, so that there's not a curb cut on the county road. We can accommodate that. It creates no easements, no variances, no problems with the redevelopment plan, the development of the site. However, it's our understanding the township is intending on putting an EMS building or some kind of emergency services on that property. We'd advise the county that they will most likely want a direct curb cut to get ambulances, emergency vehicles out quickly in the case of an emergency. Again, the county was amenable to that. If they do not, they require the internal easement. We can accommodate that, as indicated, and then there's no impact on the project, there's no variances or anything of that nature. So, except for those two qualifications, we can comply with all the county requirements for the project. So, that's kind of background. As indicated before, Chairman, I'll give a brief overview. The entire project, as everyone is aware, is subject to the redevelopment plan for the project. The redevelopment plan requires us to come to the Board for site plan approvals. It also requires us to come to the Board at our first application, which is this application, to show a, more or less a conceptual development of the entire site, and that is the portion of the application, that is a preliminary site plan for the entire site. The first part of the application, I should say, is the subdivision. We will be subdividing off a little more than five acres on the corner of the property, the western corner along Main Street, that'll be dedicated to the township. The last application before the Board, that's part of our hearing on the 30th and tonight, is final site plan for Phase 1, and that is, we have started testimony on that, we will finish that. The Phase 1 includes repurposing the existing facility into residential uses. There's also going to be a 7,000-square-foot community room that will be made available to the township. The building will be converted into 104 senior living-for-sale condominium units, and there will be 21 affordable housing units as mandated by the court. Those have been included. The existing onsite, the wastewater treatment plant is going to be upgraded. The plant will not be expanded in any fashion. It has a maximum capacity design, as well as the DEP permits for it, of 40,000 gallons per day that will not be increased. The only thing that will happen with that, it will be upgraded to modern standards, which DEP approves before any work is done. The plant will also be operated by a licensed operator who not only complies with DEP regulations, but DEP also inspects the operation. That is kind of a high view. Do you need more testimony, Mr. Chairman, on just the, summary, rather?
I think that's good for now.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. And as indicated, we have two more witnesses for you this evening. As indicated, our architect and engineer have already testified. We have Mr. Jordan Volk seated to my right of Colliers Engineering, who is responsible for the wastewater treatment plant permitting, and he will give some testimony and details on that. And our last witness is our traffic engineer. So unless there's any further preliminary, we'll proceed with testimony, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Volk?
We need to swear to man our profession, since we're still sworn from last hearing. So, when you're ready...
Certainly. Mr. Volk?
I swear to tell the truth, not about the truth, so help you God, with regard to this application.
I do.
Okay, just spell your full name for the record.
J.O.R.D.A.N. V.O.L.K.
Mr. Volk, would you please give your licensure to the Board?
Yes, I'm a professional, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a number of other states. I've been working in the field of drinking water design and wastewater design for 25 years.
We offer Mr. Volk as an expert in engineering specializing in wastewater treatment?
No objection, right? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll continue. Getting right to it, George, you were retained by the applicant to design and upgrade the modernization of the existing wastewater treatment plant and related DEP permitting, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you identify what is the current capacity of the existing plant?
Yes, the capacity of the plant currently is 40,000 gallons per day, and that is governed by the permit through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. It's actually governed through their discharge permit of the flows that are able to be discharged per the plant.
Is there any intention to increase the capacity of the plant?
No, there's no intention as part of this project to increase the capacity of the plant. The, as I'll discuss later, the 40,000 gallons per day is sufficient to accommodate what is proposed for this project. The proposed improvements are just to modernize and enhance the plant's performance.
Thank you. Can you explain the current design and operation?
Yes, the current plant, as it stands today, accepts flow from a pump station near the existing building. That first goes to equalization tank. The equalization tank meters flow, also has aeration. From there, it goes to an aeration tank, which is, serves for biological treatment. There's then chemical addition, and it goes to a clarifier for removal of solids. There's then an additional aeration step, there's sand filtration and UV disinfection, which is the final step of removing bacteria before it either discharges to the onsite lagoon during the summer months, that's from a period of November to April, or to the stream, which is the east branch of the Willowbrook at the rear of the property, and that is, the rest of the year is able to discharge through that.
Thank you. And the treatment plant also includes a spray irrigation. Can you explain that function and the reason for it?
Yes, it's, the spray irrigation serves the purpose if the lagoon water level gets too high. That's permitted only at 15,000 gallons per day. That draws water out of...
Sir, we're doing our best here. If you can't hear, I suggest maybe you move a little closer.
If we're going to have this meeting, everybody can hear, and hear a single word of what's being said back here. So how are we supposed to judge if we can't hear? Will the petition have this whole thing going because we can't hear?
You can sit at the seat in front.
You want to, you're more than welcome to come up front, sir.
That's all we want.
Move. Well, I don't know what you want me to tell you. I don't know what to tell you, sir.
I know what to tell them. Ask them to come to this center.
Listen, we're not going to run this meeting this way. We're doing the best we can. We can't scream just because you're all the way in the back. We're doing the best we can, okay? Just, all I can ask is for people to talk.
Can we, what are we doing?
Listen, we can adjourn the meeting if we're going to keep this up, so.
You don't want to do that for them, no? You don't want to do that for them.
No, I don't know what you want to do. I mean...
And happen at the high school where you have, you have... But, Jeremy, happen at the...
You can please be quiet. We're going to work on your issues, sir, okay?
No, why aren't you, will, say that man suggested, Jeremy?
Can we remove him, Jeff? What's the rule?
Where we can all...
Can we remove him?
Yeah.
Well...
He's not going to help.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's several seats in front. You can have him come up, and maybe, maybe he can help.
Is there a way you can raise it somehow? The volume?
I'm not too familiar with it. Yeah, the theater.
It's not hard. 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 Yeah. It's not hard. 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 It's not hard.
Well, all I can, is this loud enough for you? If I speak like this, is that loud enough?
Because the witnesses, they can't hear.
I'm asking, ma'am, I'm talking to the other gentleman. I'm not going to run it this way. I'm asking you if you can hear it, because they're going, I'm going to ask them to speak a little louder.
We start from square one, because one of us heard square one.
Give a summary.
Well, there's nothing except the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, now you're beginning to wind up.
We have, sir, I'm not going to do this with you. We had a whole meeting a few weeks ago, listen, all right. What am I going to do with this guy?
I want to get caught up there. You're going to tell them to stop talking.
We're asking for simple, basic purposes.
I'm not sure if you do a different way to present.
That's what we're asking for. Welcome to the Zoom. Now, if you can all hear me from back here, how come I can't hear you? I don't want to be... 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 I don't want to be...
Okay, everyone, we're going to, is, can you hear better now? No.
Just, can you enunciate a little louder? A little bit for the...
How about now? Is that better?
No.
Well, for those of you who are in the back that are having a hard time hearing, there's plenty of room along the walls, there's a few open seats, and the aisles open.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, George.
Why don't you all move forward so you can hear?
First of all, there's fire, and it has to be followed by a fire. You have to egress, cannot block an egress. I mean, you can have some fires, but you have to come in. You have to come in. And we're patting out. We can use that.
But if they can't hear, there's nothing we could...
Yes, move up here. We have four seats in front, but there's still time to make it this way.
So, I'm wondering if these are bad, or those are not.
That's just for... It's here, sir. If you're not set up for people to have a stream, an entire...
All right. We should...
Well, you know, then we have, what we should...
We have seats available up there. It's not allowed. We don't...
He's going to see, take, how he can...
That's the... It's not... 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 It's not...
He's going to see, take, how he can...
That's the... It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not... We'll start that question. We banned you. You didn't get another one. You got one. It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not... It's not...
Can you hear Brendan back there? You, so if I, like, right now, you can hear this, right? Can you, can you talk, sir, counselor?
Can you hear me okay back there?
No. You just got to, can you...
How about this microphone? Is that better?
Yeah, but you just got to talk a little louder, like, they're asking me to talk a little louder, just...
We'll do.
Do it better. That's the high frequency.
Got someone?
No, no, no. So, the speakers up there... That's why I... No, no, no. Speakers are not working out.
Oh, they're not? No.
You're right. Well, this is... 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 This is...
Okay. The problem...
For some reason, this works. It's a...
Better? All right, thank you.
Mine, I'll give you mine. No, but mine is new. They gave me the brand new, and this is way better.
How about now? Testing, testing. People in the back, can you hear?
Yes.
Is that better? Okay.
Yeah, Nick.
Good, thank you, Nick.
Thanks so much.
Good job.
Stand by.
Okay.
Carl, why don't you try yours?
How about now? Is that better?
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Come on up, Brendan.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Appreciate it.
So, because they couldn't hear, before we go into this witness, let's just rehash again what you said in the beginning, okay?
Oops, sorry. Give the summary of the last hearings, do the whole thing all of...
Yeah, just do it over, just to be...
No worries, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. So now that we can hear better, starting off where we started this evening, this application was continued from September 30th. At that time, our architect and engineer testified. We went through all of the reports that we had at that time. We have since received a report from the Environmental Commission dated October 20th, 2025, which was largely addressed through prior testimony, and will be addressed through Mr. Volk's testimony this evening. We also received a review letter from the County Planning Board dated October 14th, 2025, and except for two items, we can comply with all the requests in there. The two items are, one is, the county has asked for additional right-of-way dedication along Main Street. They would like an additional 10 feet off the front of our property. While we can accommodate that right-of-way dedication, once we do that, the property size and any potential variances, bulk standards are now measured from that right-of-way line. We have asked, and the county has agreed, subject to getting a revised report, to give them an easement instead, that would avoid all the issues with lot sizes and the like. However, should we have to do a right-of-way dedication and have to re-strike the line, the lot sizes would be smaller, the five-acre piece going to the city would be slightly smaller, as well as the remainder. However, neither the lot that will be transferred to the township nor the remainder of the property will be undersized as to lot size. It will have no bulk variances because of the new right-of-way line or any issues of that nature. So whichever way that goes, we can comply, doesn't create need for variances or additional testimony here this evening. We just wanted to advise the Board. The other issue in the county letter is they disfavor new curb cuts on the county roads. So the five-acre piece that is going to the township, they are originally not inclined to give that a curb cut, and request that we have an internal easement between the five acres for the township and the main drive aisle on Main Street. We can accommodate that. It will work physically, it will not adversely impact the development of the five-acre site or the remainder of our site. It does not create any variances, does not create any issues with the redevelopment plan. But again, our understanding is the township would like to use that for an EMS station or some other type of emergency services, and they will most likely want a curb cut. So ambulances, whatever, can get out of there quickly. We've explained that to the county, and the county, again, has agreed to that concept, but we haven't gotten a revised report, so we can't say that that will be the final outcome. But again, if it has to be an internal easement, we can accommodate it. It creates no easements, variances, or the like. So aside from those two issues, we can comply with the county report. The overall, as well as far as general overview from our last hearing, there's essentially three applications as part of this hearing to the Board. This is our first visit to the Board. The first is a subdivision, as indicated, we are creating a five-acre parcel on the western side of the property on Main Street, which will be dedicated to the township free of charge. We are also doing, as required by the redevelopment plan, a preliminary site-wide site plan, which is more or less a concept plan that shows we can develop the entire site in accordance with the redevelopment plan. We went through all that testimony last meeting. And then the third application is a final site plan for Phase 1. The project will be built in four phases, and as to Phase 1, which is repurposing of the existing building, which is the old Vonage Headquarters, that'll be repurposed into 104 senior living-for-sale condominium units, including 21 affordable housing units as required by the court. We will also be, as part of Phase 1, upgrading and modernizing the existing wastewater treatment plant. The capacity as required by, I'm sorry, is limited by the DEP permits, and the capacity of the plant itself is 40,000 gallons per day. That will not be increased. Again, all we're doing is modernizing the equipment and ensuring it complies with all of the current DEP standards. This evening, the only witnesses we will have is our engineer, who is in charge of the wastewater treatment plant, Mr. Jordan Volk, and we will also have our traffic engineer, Mr. Ray. I think, again, since not everyone could hear, Mr. Chairman, as much as it's a lot of repeat, let's swear the witness in again, qualify him, and start with his testimony fresh, if that's okay with the Board?
Yep.
Thank you very much, and again, thanks, everyone, for your patience in getting technology worked out. So, Mr. Volk, we're going to swear you in again, sir.
Do you swear to tell, you swear to tell the truth, not about the truth, so help you God, with regard to this application?
I do.
Okay, for the record, just spell your name again for the record, please.
Sure. Jordan, J.O.R.D.A.N., Volk, V.O.L.K.
And Mr. Volk, would you give the Board the benefit of your licensure?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states, and I've been working in the field of drinking water and wastewater design and permitting for over 25 years.
And we offer Mr. Volk as an expert in those areas?
Yeah, there was no objection to that, so...
Thank you, Chairman. We'll proceed back with the testimony. Mr. Volk, you were retained by the applicant to design and upgrade and modernize the existing wastewater treatment plant and related DEP permitting, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Can you identify the current capacity of the existing wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, the current capacity of the wastewater treatment plant is governed by New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and it is 40,000 gallons per day per the groundwater and the surface water discharge permits.
Thank you. And in your design and permitting, is there any intention to increase the capacity of that plant?
No, there's no intent to increase the permitted capacity of the wastewater treatment plant as part of this project. The flow, it will remain at 40,000 gallons per day is the limit. This project is just proposing to modernize and enhance the processes at the wastewater treatment plant.
Can you explain the existing plant, although it's not an operation, it's designed, and how it would operate if it was operating today?
Yes, the existing plant receives flow from the existing office building through a pump station, which pumps to an equalization tank at the head of the plant. That equalization tank serves to smooth out the flow going into the plant, it monitors the flow, and there's also aeration in that tank. It then goes through to a clarifier, which is for solids removal. There's then an additional re-aeration process. It then goes to existing sand filters for further filtration and polishing, and then finally to UV filters for the final step of disinfection before it either goes to the onsite lagoon during the summer months, and that's from April to November, or to surface water to the east branch of the Willowbrook, and that's the remaining portion of the year during the winter.
Thank you. And the wastewater treatment plant also includes a spray irrigation system, can you explain that?
That's correct. It's what you would call reclaimed water. So that's permitted under the groundwater discharge permit. Basically, water is pulled out of the lagoon, which is all treated wastewater. That's all water that's been processed to the requirements of the groundwater discharge permit. That reused water is then pumped through piping, through an irrigation system, and a spray irrigation field gets rid of that additional water. This is only used if the level in the lagoon gets high enough that it's necessary. From discussing with the existing wastewater treatment plant operator and his discussions with previous operators, nobody's aware of this actually being used at any time.
Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, we're proposing to make improvements to the plant, can you explain those as well?
Yes, sure. The improvements are to ensure the long-term operation of the wastewater treatment plant and to make sure that it meets all of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Permit requirements. The first step will be to rehab the existing equalization tank, that's a concrete tank. The concrete tank itself will be rehabilitated, the aeration system within that tank will be rehabilitated, and the flow metering also will be replaced. We'll also add a commune neater, which adds to basically macerate or, you know, break down any larger solids that can get into the wastewater treatment plant. From there, it goes to the existing aeration tanks, those tanks will be rehabbed, and also new aeration equipment and blowers placed in those tanks. That will increase the oxygen transfer and removal of, you know, some of the bacteria in the wastewater. The existing clarifier will be rehabilitated to further improve solids removal. The re-aeration tanks will also have the same process that was discussed to be done in the aeration tanks. The tank rehabbed, the equipment, the piping, and the diffusers and the blowers rehabilitated. The sand filters that I mentioned earlier, the filters themselves are good, those will be rehabilitated with new media for that final step of filtration, and the UV system will be replaced for the final disinfection. All these things together will ensure meeting the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's surface water and groundwater discharge permits.
Thank you. And the operator, which you mentioned, that operator needs to be licensed by DEP, and DEP also will inspect to make sure it's being operated correctly in accordance with all regulations, is that correct?
Yes, every wastewater treatment plant in the state has to have a licensed wastewater operator. That operator is certified and licensed through the state, through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. As part of the groundwater and the surface water discharge permits that I mentioned earlier, there's annual, quarterly, and monthly permitting requirements that have to be met with respect to certain levels of testing and reporting back to the state.
Thank you. And that concludes Mr. Volk's testimony, he's available for questions.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Mr. Volk, you might understand that at the completion of this project, you'll only be producing 40,000 gallons per day?
That's the limit of the permit. That's the most that can be processed on a daily basis through the wastewater treatment plant.
But what are we producing?
It, so the way that wastewater flow works, it's not consistent. You know, every time somebody uses a sink, uses a toilet, it goes through the piping to the wastewater treatment plant. So it's not that that will be the exact flow every single day, that's the limit of what can go through the plant, through the permit.
Mr. King, if I may, members of the...
Excuse me, guys, you are not to speak now. We're, listen, it's, you'll have your chance to ask questions. I'm not gonna do this, you're not gonna disrupt them, you'll have an opportunity to speak. I haven't, you'll have an opportunity to speak.
If I may just repeat the Chairman's comment, every member of the public will have a chance to ask questions of this witness. When the board has finished asking questions, the Chairman will ask members of the public to come up and ask questions. So if you feel we haven't answered a question, you will have time to re-answer the question. Mr. King, if I may, I understand what your question is, I'm gonna phrase it. Can you explain how the four phases will be handled by the existing wastewater treatment plant without increasing the 40,000 gallons per day limit? I think that's what Mr. King wants to know. So could you just give a brief explanation of that?
Yes, so through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection regulations, there are flow numbers for different types of units. So different bedroom apartments, or homes, or assisted care facilities are done by beds, the flow is projected through those regulations. So for this project, the entire project, in all four phases, the flow is projected at 45,650 gallons per day. The first three phases are 39,210 gallons per day. If, excuse, if I could finish explaining that. So per New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, those are the projected flows, typically flows that actually come from those facilities are lower. There's regulations called the Capacity Assurance Program, where once a facility is in operation, you can average out the monthly flows over a year, and that's the flow that's actually going to the plant. So as I was saying before, there's a limit of the flow, but the flow is actually what comes through the wastewater pipes, what people use. So what we will do is after the first three phases, look at what that average flow is, and then assess the fourth phase based on what capacity is left in the plant under that 40,000 gallons per day. If it's necessary to change the number of units in the fourth phase, that will be done.
Five thousand additional gallons per day. Where do, where does the effluent go? How does it go to this, what you call a lagoon? I'll talk a little cesspool.
So the same way it does today, there's piping from the existing building into the lagoon, and the new buildings to be constructed will also be connected through the wastewater treatment plant. The question I'd like to ask Mr. Volk as a follow-up is, these regulations that you base the initial flow calculations on are rather old, they don't take into account modern water-saving features and things of that nature, so it's an overestimate essentially, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as you indicated, when we have an operational facility, you are able to monitor the exact flow and recalculate exactly how much flow is going to the wastewater treatment plant, is that correct?
That's correct.
And once you do that, if there's existing capacity, then the entire four phases would be able to be handled in the wastewater treatment plant, is that your anticipation?
Yes, that's the anticipation.
And once you create those actual occup, in-use flows, those would be reviewed by DEP as well to make sure that that's correct and that you're not overtaxing the plant?
Yes, those would have to be reviewed by DEP.
Thank you. Mr. King, any further questions, sir?
How does the effluent get to the, what do you call the lagoon? Is it treated?
Yes.
It's a treated?
Yes, yes.
So it's going through the plant?
Yes, all of the water that goes to the lagoon is processed through the wastewater treatment plant, goes through all the steps of the process that I mentioned before to remove bacteria, to remove solids, and has to meet the permit conditions for groundwater discharge to go to the lagoon.
We're diverting this is because we have too much flow going into the, out of the plant? The effluent, in other words, you're going over the limit?
That's currently how the existing plant is permitted through DEP.
Go to the lagoon if you're over capacity?
No, no, the lagoon, the current permits through DEP are half of the year, it goes to the lagoon during the summer months, that's April to November, and during the winter months, it goes to the stream to the east branch of the Willowbrook. So it's half of the year where it goes to those different discharges.
And the effluent in the lagoon gets spread out in irrigation?
It's, that's only emergency measure for the irrigation. If the level of the lagoon gets too high, so what the lagoon serves for is evaporation of that treated water and also percolation of that through the ground, like a septic system would.
Thank you.
And Wes, before you start, I didn't realize T&amp;M was here, who are consultants on this, so I'd like to give them an opportunity to comment and ask questions on this issue. I don't know if it's Bob or Ed's gonna speak? Just they have to be sworn, right? Yeah, so I just need you to stand so you can be sworn. We can give you that microphone, hopefully they can hear you back there.
You really gotta put it close and really talk loud.
Good evening.
Swear to tell the whole truth, not but the truth, so help you God, with regard to the application.
I do.
And for the record, just spell your name for the record.
Edward, E-D-W-A-R-D, Herman, H-E-R-R-M-A-N. No relation if there's any question. Here tonight is the township engineer, as part of the redevelopment plan, it was written in that the township engineer was to weigh in on things such as the wastewater treatment plant specifically, outside of the purview of the board engineer and his review capacity. I brought with me tonight Bob Euro, that most of you will remember. I also have Michael Willis, who's our technical leader in this arena, so I'd ask that maybe Mike come up to assist me. Probably wanna swear him as well?
Yes.
It's working on YouTube, and our IT is working to fix Facebook, but it's on YouTube. Thank you.
Michael, swear you in. You swear to tell the whole truth, not but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Just again, spell your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? There you go. Michael Willis, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-W-I-L-L-I-S. And I guess in terms of, you know, Jordan, just questions on the operation itself, what are the requirements of the operator to ensure that the plant is in compliance with the discharge permit, both in terms of water quality and the capacity and discharge?
The licensed wastewater operator, per the groundwater and the surface water discharge permits, has to report flows, has to report all the testing results, as I mentioned, on a, you know, there's different frequencies for different aspects of the permit, but on either a daily, monthly, quarterly, or annual time period.
And just furthering on that, does the DEP take a look at these discharge permits on a regular basis to determine if there needs to be an amendment?
Yes, the discharge permits, groundwater and surface water are renewed every five years, and at that time, DEP goes through and renews those with any new requirements on the permit, based on current regulations.
And that's a procedure that DEP does for every wastewater treatment plant throughout New Jersey?
That's correct.
For this plant in particular, the improvements that you're proposing, equalization, general maintenance, replacement of parts, is a upgrade to ensure continued compliance with these measures?
That's correct.
And the applicant's gonna be responsible for maintaining an operator at this site for 24/7 for the term of this usage?
That's correct, that's required by DEP.
Just on to the rest of the improvements, any changes to the site conveyance to the wastewater treatment plant?
All of the flow going to the equalization tank will still come from the existing onsite pump station.
And in terms of effluent quality, what was currently there for treatment and what will be there in the future will meet all those required permit requirements as well?
That's correct.
I have no further questions at this time.
Now I think Mr. Willis summarized it, I think the important thing to recognize is that the DEP is the overseeing agent for this. Everything they've said is accurate, as represented here tonight.
Yeah, and I'd just like to state again that we could sit here and talk and ask all these questions, at the end of the day, they have to still go through the proper channels through all the governing agencies and obtain all the necessary approvals, right?
That's correct.
Right. And it's all gonna be done in accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey and the township of Homedale, correct?
Correct, and there's multiple checks and balances, if something were to go above and beyond, the state would be aware, they would have to come back, they would have to get township approval by way of the various permit obligations, the township would have to sign off on it. So they wouldn't be able to get anything through in the future that wouldn't be, have lots of eyes by both the planning board and the township engineer's office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Wes?
Hi. This treatment plant, that's considered a two-stage treatment plant, is that right? Do I understand that right?
Yeah, you can say that with the aeration and the clarification.
The, just tell me in English how this system was supposed to work in regard to the lagoon. If everything worked correctly, what happens?
So the, if I understand your question correctly, so the existing wastewater treatment plant, and it's gonna operate in the same manner with improved equipment, treats all of the wastewater flow from the site, and then clean, disinfected water is discharged to the lagoon. And then that is, you know, through evaporation and percolation is how the water, you know, dissipates into the environment.
So the idea is through both evaporation and percolation, the percolation is going to recharge what? Where's that water percolating to?
That goes into the soil similar to a septic system would.
Are you familiar with the site?
Yes.
You visited the site? Have you ever seen the lagoon when it was contained water?
Yes.
Okay. When I look at Google Earth pictures at various times of the year, sometimes I see it really, really green, sometimes I see it less green. What is that? How is, is that algae that blooms?
That could be, I haven't seen those photos in the past, so I can't speak to that, but that's possible that it could be.
The water in the lagoon, is that stagnant water?
Well, it's percolating into the ground, so it's not stagnant.
So it's being fed by a pump, right? When the plant is done with it, it pumps it into the lagoon?
That's correct, there's pipes that connect from the plant.
It sits there until it percolates or evaporates.
That's correct.
Nothing, no forcing it into the ground, it's just a natural occurrence, right?
Correct.
So other than the water going into the lagoon, it's in essence a stagnant, well, I'll call it stagnant, you don't have to call it stagnant. What size is the lagoon, what's the dimensions?
I don't know the exact dimensions off the top of my head.
If I said it was 662 feet long and 140 feet wide, would you consider that might be accurate?
We can have our engineer confirm the measurements for you.
Listen, everyone in the audience just has to be quiet, I know everyone's chomping at the bit here, we wanna get through this as quick as possible. Just let us ask our questions, you'll have an opportunity.
Having lived through and close to a two-stage sewer plant, it was at Greenwood Avenue in Cliffwood Beach, it was unlivable. It discharged to the swamps. I can distinctly remember my neighbor's name was Paul Beniola, and what he did is, it was so bad that he used to take samples of the effluent and bring it to the township committee meetings to, for them to sort of smell. So I don't think it's out of character or out of line to ask that, would it make sense to bring a sample or two of effluent, of what's gonna be contained in the lagoon, to a meeting like this? Number one, two, I don't wanna forget to ask if an onsite meeting at the site would be a smart idea. So I'd like to suggest that we have an onsite meeting. It seems that, you talk about a bifurcated, I talk about a bifurcated, two permits, one certain time of year, another six months of the year. Let's talk about the percolation part of it, right? So the idea is for, let's say 12 months a year, it's supposed to percolate into the soil. Why would I ever take that water and pump it directly into the stream?
It's only permitted for six months of the year to go to the lagoon.
Why would you do that? Why would, why would, why would you wanna do that?
I can't speak to why the plant was originally permitted this way, that's the existing permit, how they... Soil samples to ensure percolation in the lagoon.
Regarding spraying of the effluent onto the, it would be on the property, right? It would be onto grassy area of the property if you're going to spray the effluent on, somewhere. Is that right?
That's correct. There's existing, an existing spray field.
Okay. And you do not know if that was employed, correct?
As far as I'm aware from talking with the operator and his discussion with previous operators, it's never been used.
But you reserve the right to use it?
It's, it's still in the current DEP permit.
Okay. What happens to that land? I mean, are you spraying it on the grass where the baseball field is or where a recreational?
No, it's not, it's not on the ball field. It's contained in a, in a specific area by the DEP permit.
But you're saying that the area that you spray in is contained, the area that's being sprayed in is contained in the permit? Is that what you're saying?
The area where they can spray?
Yes.
Is regulated and there's existing spray heads and it's fenced in.
So this is in place now? This is, okay.
Yes, yes.
I never saw that on any plan. Speaking of plans, I had the TNM report, that was the TNM report, and that was dated, that was dated September 30th. You're familiar with that? I didn't know Colliers did a report. I was, assumption TNM was doing the report. I was wrong, I guess.
Wes, TNM is the Township Engineer, Colliers is the applicant's engineer.
Yes. So in TNM's report, it says number five, a new packaged wastewater treatment plant will be installed to treat the flows. That's not what I'm hearing, right? I'm hearing about refurbished.
Rehabilitating the existing treatment plant, correct?
Is there any place that you're aware of in New Jersey that has a similar system to this, because I'm not, that we could visit and say, yeah, it looks like it works good?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of an exact same facility. Every treatment plant is slightly different, but that is something that I could look into and provide a recommendation for a similar facility.
The other treatment plant that I was familiar with growing up was in Dover Township. It was in the neighborhood also. And it was so bad that they put concrete tanks up, so instead of having a lagoon, they had concrete tanks to hold the effluent. So if it turns out that the residents of the community have a problem with the smell, the mosquitoes spraying the effluent elsewhere, what would I say? What is, what is the remedy, number one? Number two, I'm of the understanding that since 2000, the DEP, the NJDEP violations were found in 19 of 25 inspections. So my follow-up question to that would be, what is the mechanism for remedying that? In other words, typically you find a problem and then the DEP fines you, right? So you get a fine, and then you're supposed to fix it. What if you can't fix it? Who's paying these fines? Is this a developer? Is this the homeowners association? Or is this ultimately a township gets stuck with this?
Sorry, not aware of the prior violations, but the reason for the upgrade is to make sure that it complies with all current standards and it operates properly. So the fact that there were violations shows that it needs to be upgraded, we are addressing that. As far as your other question is, if it's not operating properly, we have to fix it to make sure it operates properly. Whatever we need to do to make sure it operates properly needs to get done, we will do that. Again, there'll be a licensed operator who will make sure it complies on a day-to-day basis and will also be reporting DEP. DEP will have oversight over those issues. So it's not something that would fall in the town, it's the property owner's responsibility, the developer's responsibility, not the town.
And let me just, because I know the big thing here is really, I think, are you just refurbishing it to meet the standards, the minimum that you have to comply with? Are you bringing it into compliance with even today's standards?
We're bringing it up to 100% to the standards that are in place today.
Right. Okay. That's what I wanted to make clear.
So my concern still would be that this is only a two-stage plant. In theory, I suppose, this is my speculation, that a percolation lagoon operated properly might work. But in terms of the other six months of the year, I think it's outrageous that it would be discharged directly into the lagoon. I think that, my own opinion, is that, huh, into the stream, sorry, that something went wrong here in the past with that original percolation lagoon, and on an emergency basis, they must have said, you can discharge directly into the stream. I'm thinking that, now, is the effluent that's going to be discharged from this residential sort of 24-hour occupied, in your opinion, would that be different than an office building considering that there's going to be a medical facility, considering that there's going to be washers and dryers and things? So in terms of the quality of effluent or the makeup of the effluent, would that be different?
If I may, before he answers that question, to get back to your other question, which is, under current regulations, we are not allowed to discharge untreated effluent into the stream. Not allowed, period. If it happened in the past, not aware of it, we didn't do it. So it will not happen in the future, and as indicated in his testimony, that's the purpose of the spray field. If there's an issue, the spray field is used. Again, that water is treated, it's what's called gray water, and if you've ever been out in the West, they have entire communities, entire communities, I've been to them, that are irrigated completely with the same type of gray water that would be discharged through the spray, through the spray field. So what happened in the past, not going to happen in the future. It will not discharge in that stream untreated. As to your other question regarding 24 hours operation, difference between an office building and residential, I'll have Mr. Volk answer that question for you, sir.
Sure. So to answer your question on the type of wastewater, the equalization tank is what averages out the flow going to the plant, so that it takes account the difference of maybe an office building where you definitely normally have flow during the day, you know, every type of facility, how it's used, there's different peaks, like people at home use more in the morning when you're getting ready for work. The type of effluent won't change drastically. If anything, it will be kind of watered down, like you said, by using things such as washers, showers, not just the typical wastewater from a restroom that you would have going to the wastewater treatment plant. And just to address something on the permit, actually, you were talking about the difference between the surface water and the groundwater permit. Just to be clear, the surface water permit has more stringent requirements for the discharge to the stream. So when it, when it discharges to the lagoon, it has to be designed, the plant, for those stringent requirements of the surface water discharge?
I wasn't intimating that the water would be untreated. In fact, my concern is even this two-stage plant does not supply a significant, not the word, not, a higher grade of filtration to even consider putting it into a stream. So I'm not saying that it's completely untreated. I'm saying even to the level two-stage that you're doing, it's not suitable, in my opinion.
Mr. Volk, the, the method of treatment is one thing. The allowable levels for the discharge in the stream are governed by DEP, is that correct?
That is correct. They're governed by the surface water discharge permit.
And no matter how you treat it, it has to meet those requirements by law to discharge in the stream, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the way you have designed the plant, it will meet those standards, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I just reserved the right to have some more questions, but right now, I'm kind of out, except the solids. We talked about the initial stage of filtration involves removing solids. What I was used to seeing in, the thing that I'm used to, is they would put these solids into beds, and there would be four or five beds of varying stages of evaporation. Then once it got, you know, the oldest one would then be trucked away from the site. How are you handling the solids in this case?
This plant would not operate that way. There's a clarifier for solids removal, and then it goes to a sludge holding tank, which is then hauled off-site, you know, and discharged per DEP regulations.
So what you call the slush charge, slush?
Sludge.
Sludge?
Sludge.
Is put into a separate tank, open tank? Is it onsite now?
That, that's onsite. I don't, I don't believe that tank is open.
You think it's a closed site? So that takes solids, it puts it, it's in a closed container sort of thing, and then it's trucked away on a basis that when it gets full, it gets trucked out, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
I mean, in short, it's really no different than most septic systems, right? In homes, very similar, the concept.
The concept is this is much more advanced. A septic system doesn't have any level of treatment, it's just the solids get.
Right. But the solids get separated and you pump out your solids, like anyone's going to do at this facility, they're going to truck the solids out, and the water then goes into the leaching fields or the other fields, and it gets percolated into the ground, right? Am I oversimplifying it? I mean, just the gist of it.
That, that's the, that's the general conceptual level of how it works with more advanced treatment. Scott, one difference I would say is that this, what you have underground in your septic system is completely exposed.
No, no, I'm not comparing, I'm just trying to explain the difference when people hear sludge and clarification, I'm not sure it's going, they understand that when you, he's talking about the waste, human waste goes into tanks, and they collect the solids from the waste, and the liquids go into the system which gets treated, and then eventually goes out into either the stream or, or into the leaching field. But the solids will be collected in an enclosed environment and then be shipped and disposed of properly, right? Am I, just to make sure I understand it, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So I would, I would comment that the difference between a home septic system is everything is underground. In this case, you're taking what you might call the leaching fields and exposing it to the atmosphere.
I'm not comparing it, Wes. I'm just trying to explain the difference between the two, because, you know, we, all right, just a general comment. We spend 80% of our time on these applications talking about the environmental stuff, with the wastewater and the, at the end of the day, that's why we have the DEP, that's why we have the EPA. They got to follow all these rules and regulations before they do anything. It's all got to be done properly, right? And I believe that our professionals have said that they are okay with the system that they're proposing. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Well, maybe that's the one thing, I mean, what impact, put your hand down, we're not ready.
You know, when you, when I'm ready to bring it to the public, you'll get to talk. Okay? All right. All right. Because we're not ready yet, there's a separate section, okay, sir? And if you keep interrupting, I'll have you removed. Okay? Yes, we will. No, I'm trying to, first of all, I'm trying to explain to everyone here what we're, what we're, what we're dealing with here, okay? This is something that, it's, we don't rule on the effluent. We don't rule on the, the facility that they're putting in. That's what the EPA is for, that's what the DEP is for, that's what all these agencies are for. It's got nothing to do with the people sitting here. At the end of the day, they still have to go through the proper channels. All we're really doing is approving a proposal that they're putting in place, and they're going to have to go prove that they meet all the requirements in these government agencies. And if they do, they'll proceed, and if they don't, they're going to have to go back to the drawing bed, drawing board, and show them how they can comply with these rules and regulations. That's what they're here for. All right. So before we open to public questions, anyone else on the board have something they want to ask of this witness? Okay. All right. So at this time, we are going to open it to public comments, questions. When you come up, please ask questions, it's not the time for statements. And.
I thought there was two witnesses.
What's that? Yeah, okay.
We can ask one witness, then we go into the next.
So, so just, so everyone knows, questions only for this witness, is how we work, after the board's done and they're finished, they open it up to the public, so anyone can come up, ask any question of this witness to what he's just testified to. When that's all finished, we'll proceed to the next witness that they have the traffic. At that point, we'll repeat the same process. At some point, there'll be a board discussion, at some point then, the board, the members of the public will be asked to come up and make any comments they want under oath, and then there'll be eventually a vote if we get that far tonight. So that's how the process will finish up.
Right. And you'll all get a chance, you don't have to raise your hands yet, you all get a chance to speak and ask questions. All I ask is try not to repeat the same questions. If it's the same question, I'm going to cut you off. We don't want to be here till 3:00 in the morning, okay? So whoever will start in the first row, whoever wants to come up first, they can come up first, we'll go by row. What about the second row?
No, no, no.
Oh, then I said.
I'm trying to decide who wants to go first.
Oh, so, and we are going to limit the questions to three minutes per person.
My name is Anne Marie Bontempo, 22 Grandview Drive, Homedale, New Jersey. I sat on the Board of Health here at Homedale, and I also sat on the County Board of Health, and I was the President of the County Board of Health. So I have a little bit of background sitting up there on the dais. I also sat on the zoning board for Homedale two years back. Right alongside Mr. Ackerson. Can you, can't, can't hear me? Is it on?
Yes.
All right, it's on. What part didn't you hear? All of it? Okay. All right. So in reference to the sewage system, I would like to know, what is your backups to, first of all, I think your phases, 1, 2, 3 phases is going to produce 39,350 gallons daily. That's almost 40,000 per day. You say those are estimates that are on old data, however, when somebody lives in a house, you can't control how long they leave the faucet on or how, what kind of showerhead they're using. So when you go to phase four, you said, oh, well, if we're reaching our limits by three, then we're going to mitigate on four. But you're asking for waivers here, 20 waivers on various points that are approving phase one, but wavering, partial waivers for phases two, three, and four. So I don't want any of those waivers to influence the waste management system, because I want to know everything upfront that you're going to do. Also, what are you going to do to mitigate when you're overflowing, if it happens, into the Willbrook Stream? And not into, we know what you do to mitigate if it goes to the lagoon, then you have the sprayers. And how close are those sprayers going to be to residential areas, and how will that possibly impact? I don't know what that is, where that is.
Is there a question? I just want to get to the que, I don't, I just want to get to the question, because we've got a lot of people here.
He understands what I'm saying to him. He understands, because he does this every day. And I dealt with septic systems every day.
Okay. I just didn't hear a question, go ahead.
All right. I'm asking him, how are they going to mitigate when they're going out to Willbrook Pond if they're doing over 40K a day?
Okay.
Are you going to stop it? Or are you just going to let the overflow go into Willbrook Pond?
So this, this question was already answered through testimony, the question, the answer was, the design is built upon the DEP regulations, which are old. The, once it is operational, for example, when phase one is operational, we will know what the actual usage is. So then we can recalculate exactly what phase one is producing, not based upon an assumption in the regulations. Again, the regulations are older, they don't take into account low-flow fixtures and things of that nature. So when we get to phase two, we will know exactly what phase one is doing, and we'll figure out phase two and three and four. Should we ever get to the point, when we come back for phase four, that it, there's not enough capacity in the plant, then we'll have to scale back phase four. If it turns out we don't build phase four, there's not enough capacity, then we don't build phase four. But it will be reviewed on actual flows, it will be reviewed by DEP before we can start doing that. So that's how that will work.
How much of a timeframe are you going to give it to observe and get those numbers?
It has to be over a year. 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 It's, it's an average of a year that we would have to give information to DEP to recalculate it.
On each phase?
For the entire plant. So the, the DEP views it as how much is going into that plant. It doesn't matter where it's coming from. Phase one, two, three, a combination. The plant has a certain capacity. We can't get over that. We have to show DEP that we're not going over that and we're not generating that. As indicated, we are coming back for each phase. This is just phase one we're here for. So when we come back for phase two, three, and four, if we have those running calculations, we'll be able to update it. But again, we cannot go over the 40,000 gallon capacity. If we, if we're able to make it up through actual usage, then that's great. We can do it. If we cannot, then we can't build the additional units. It's, I don't mean to oversimplify it, but it is that simple. And just to answer your other question on the waivers, the waivers that we have requested in the report you're reviewing are for the site-wide preliminary site plan. As indicated, that's the only planning board application that we could closely fit to what the redevelopment plan requests. So the redevelopment plan requests when we first come to the board, this is our first visit here, that we show that we are developing the site in accordance with the redevelopment plan, which we've already shown last meeting. That we can develop all four phases except for the wastewater treatment in conformance with the plan. So we have the right heights, the densities, setbacks, impervious coverage, landscaping. All those things the redevelopment plan requires, we show that we can accommodate on the site. We haven't designed each phase. That's why we come back for final site plan for each phase. We're here for phase one, final site plan. And then again, when we get phase two designed, we'll come back for final site plan for phase two. Same with three, same with four.
You're onsite operator for the Waste Management Treatment Program or plant? And they're going to be testing the water? They're going to be monitoring the output? How regularly are those reports going to be provided?
Those have to, those have to be reported to DEP.
Is that public information that even township can see?
Yes, you can access that on the DEP website.
Okay. But once again, with everything coming so close at phases one, two, and three, I'm worried about any over discharge into the Willowbrook Stream. I'm very concerned about that. A capacity, there are almost, there are capacity of three phases. And I think wavering things, when I see a waiver for
Well, is there a question? We'll have comments later.
If I may, there's, there's no waivers that we have requested for the preliminary site plan that involve the wastewater treatment plant. So any waiver that's listed, if the board grants it, will not impact the wastewater treatment plant whatsoever.
Stormwater Waste Management Report, including drainage calculations, drainage areas, maps, operations.
Ma'am, if, if you have a question, I don't need you to read it. If you have a question, we have a lot of people have questions here.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Next. State your name.
Hi, everybody. Kristen Celaro Franco from Five Hop Brook Lane, Holmdel. Okay.
I'm sorry, could you spell your last name, please?
C.E.L.A.U.R.O. Franco, F.R.A.N.C.O.
Thank you.
I know. Okay. So my understanding is that medications excreted from patients' bodies lead into groundwater. When people take medications, their bodies do not fully absorb or metabolize all the active compounds. The remainder is excreted in urine and feces entering the sewage system. How does the facility plan to deal with these compounds?
There are no current regulations for those aspects of DEP.
Okay, now this brings me to the question of why can't we think critically about these things? Why is this okay? Just because the DEP says it's okay, why is this okay for our community? Let's, let's talk about it differently. What is a state-of-the-art water treatment facility for a skilled nursing facility?
First of all, I would jump to the question, we're not required to build a state-of-the-art. We're required to build a DEP regulations.
Okay, let's do the bare minimum. That's a good idea.
Listen, you have more questions? You're good? Thank you. Next, who wants to have another question?
My name is Peter Franco, Five Hop Brook Lane. I own the Hop Brook Farm over on Holmdel Road. Oh, yeah. Okay, so my question is, speaking of the painkillers, antibiotics, I'll get that in a second. Antidepressants, cardiovascular drugs, hormones, anti-seizure drugs, even fragrances that get past these sewer treatment plants that you guys are building, end up in your percolation lagoons. Your percolation lagoons, are they going to be lined? Is this stuff going to be able to leach out, leach into the ground and potentially go into the tributary, which is the Willowbrook stream, which will end up in our drinking water? How are you going to prevent this? I use well water for the farm. We have two wells on the farm. Is this going to get into my well water? Are animals going to be swimming in your pond?
Well, if you ask them a question, let them, let them answer the question. All right, well, let them answer one at a time, okay?
I don't think this is funny, but go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm trying to understand what the question was.
The question is, is your lagoon going to be lined? So everything that gets through your treatment plant doesn't end up in the stream.
The lagoon is not lined.
It's not lined. So it can leach, it can perk into the ground and end up in the Willowbrook.
The, the lagoon is designed to perk into the ground.
Okay, so all of these, what I just mentioned, is a possibility can end up in our drinking water.
I can't speak to those. They're not regulated by DEP and I'm not
But common sense says it could, right? The, the sand's not going to filter it, correct? If your treatment plant can't filter it, the ground's not going to filter it. Now, back to that. Animal migration. Geese are going to land in your pond. Your, I'm sorry, your, your percolation lagoon, they're going to crap all over my farm. How do I protect myself from the contaminants that you're now letting out onto what I'm growing? In other words, this stuff is going to end up in your lagoon. You guys can, there's no way to filter this out. How, how, you're not, how can you prevent it if you're saying that there's no regulations?
Not quite sure what the question is.
The question is like, how, is this going to stop? No. It's going to end up basically on my farm. It's going to end up in the drinking water. There's, there's no liner. So how can you prevent this other than what you're not going to do?
Let me ask you this, sir. What, what about the hospital, the Bay Shore Hospital? How do they get rid of their wastewater there?
Don't they have a sewer system?
Right, right. Okay, and what happens when the stuff goes into the sewer system? Can you explain that? I mean, is, is there a major difference to the drinking water?
There's, there's no difference from how it would be.
I, I'm trying to help explain things to people. Sir, I'm not going to ask you again. Jeff, can you get him out? Can we get him out? We have him removed. He won't stop talking. That guy right there. Can you have him? Yeah, he said he can. I'm telling him six times.
So we don't have any answer. Can I get to my next question?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the, you know, and to the members of the public, the chairman's doing his job. I represent boards as well. His job is to make sure the meetings run properly. Everyone has a chance to speak and everyone gets the information they're looking for. He was just recasting the question to get the answer the gentleman's looking for. No one's saying it's not, sir, and please don't speak out.
Everyone, we know it's a concern. There's, there's government agencies that oversee these policies and procedures for your exact concerns. Well, it's, there's nothing we in this room could do about that. There is nothing we could do about. They have to follow the rules.
Don't go ahead with the plan. Eliminate the problem.
All right, next question.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to complete the answer, which is the wastewater coming from this facility that goes into possible drinking water is to the same standards that DEP has for a town that has a sewer system, part of this town does, not the whole town. So if you're in an area like Bay Shore that has a sewer system and you're talking about a hospital which generates infinitely more, infinitely, let me finish. I let you ask your questions, please let me answer. Infinitely more wastewater that could potentially be a problem with the issues you're raising. The same DEP standards apply. So it doesn't matter if we had a full-on sewer system that not a drop of water went on this property or into the stream, the same exact legal standard applies to that effluent being treated before it goes into a drinking waste, a drinking water system. So the differences are relevant. It's the same standard at the end of the day. And again, as the chairman has indicated as well, and I hate to bring the township engineer, this is under DEP jurisdiction. With all due respect to this board, as the attorney can tell you, it's a board of limited jurisdiction. The law says these issues rest with DEP and nobody else. So I understand you don't like the outcome. I understand the issue with potential pharmaceuticals in the water. No one's saying that's not an issue. But the bottom line is, those are the laws that apply. If we want the laws changed in this country, we got to go get the laws changed. We just don't decide to change them on our own. So that's what we're dealing with here. Just, for example, the same issue we were talking about earlier, the county planning board and the jurisdiction over the, over the road. They want the access this way. This board has no ability to say no to that because that is what the county's jurisdiction is. Just like we can't change the speed limit on Route 34 because that's the state's jurisdiction. So unfortunately, there's things that this board cannot do, with all due respect to the board, and that's where we are. Again, to your question, the same standard applies no matter where the effluent's coming from in regard to medicines and other issues.
That is their job.
Next question.
Next, please.
What happens when this system fails? What's your backup plan? You have 300 units. You have care facilities. You know, we possibly could have another COVID and people could be held up in there. What happens when this fails? You eliminate, everyone has to leave to evacuate the premises?
This, this plant has to meet all of the permit conditions through DEP. There is also, as I, as I mentioned, the first step is an equalization tank. So if ever something needs to be replaced, equipment needs to be worked on, there's an equalization tank where the sewage can be pumped out offsite until repairs can be made and it can put back, be put back online. And that's a worst-case scenario if something needs to be fixed.
More questions?
All right, next.
Hi, my name is Peter Franco, Senior. My son also owns Six Hop Brook. And I used to be the owner, excuse me, I have an illness. I have aphasia, so my speech might be interrupted every now and then. So could you put up with me, please?
Sure.
All right. I used to own Septic Systems Incorporated, which was the biggest installer of septic's in the country. 25 systems a week. Precast, we used to maintain disposal plants. We had the 364 permits with New York State. We had vectors. We used to run across these plants all the time. All right, the actual output flow in, or the input flow into the plants very easily maneuvered where you don't get the full flow. If they check on the water meters feed, they get a little bit more accurate to see how much they're actually coming into the plants. My question to them is, all right, no matter how you design the plant, would the owner be willing to post a bond guaranteeing the maintenance and the performance of the system equal to the flow pumped out every day? And that could amount to $250,000, $300,000 a month. The town is going to pick this up? The developer or the homeowners in case there's a complete failure? I have done perks right on Six Hop Brook. The perks are terrible, five brother. The perks are terrible. You might get a little water down, maybe 12 or 13 feet. You have hard clays. You don't have sand barriers at all. So your surface drainage is going to be nothing else but runoff.
We, we try and keep, I'm sorry, sir, not to draw, I'm just trying to move it along. If there's a question, please ask it.
More than a question.
Okay. Everyone, there's a lot of people here. I'm trying to move it along, okay?
I think this is important. They're going to post a bond guaranteeing
All right, they asked the que, you asked the question on that.
They can post a bond guaranteeing the operation for the life of the project. Actually, how can I say it?
In perpetuity.
Yes. I'm sorry.
The answer is no. It's not required. Again, the, the plant is, is built to DEP specifications. There's a licensed operator who's licensed by DEP. He reports week, he reports monthly, weekly and yearly to DEP to make sure it is operating and it's functional. So the chance of a complete failure, as you're indicating, is incredibly low because it needs to be compliant day-to-day, day-over-day. It's not all of a sudden nobody looks at the thing for four years and it stops working. So this is, this is superfluous. It's not required, sir.
It's more than complacency. It's you're, you're up here telling us that the system is designed to work and yet you won't guarantee it with a bond. If you can guarantee it with a bond, I think a lot of these people will be satisfied. They're not going to get crap in their lawn. They're not going to get crap in their drinking water. And let's face it, that stream feeds what? Swimming River, which also feeds American Water Company. So all these chemicals that are going to be, I have to say it. Can all these chemicals that supposedly be coming in from your, this care facility are basically going to be sprayed? If it doesn't get absorbed in the ground, it's going to run off. Where is it going to run off? Either onto the farm that we have or into the stream that we're going to be drinking water at. So I think this is more than just a couple businesses trying to make money. All right, and it comes to more than that, but when your other professionals come up, I'll talk more about that.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone from the next row for the third? Yes.
Roberta Kaufman. I understand, when I looked at this about a year ago, that permits were not functional at this time through DEP. That permits had lagged. Do you have both permits as approved by DEP at this time?
The groundwater and the surface water discharge permit are in with DEP for renewal.
Right, but they had lagged and they were not, they, they have not, have for a while not been functional, correct?
No, that's not correct. They, they are in with renewal for DEP and the current permits are in effect until DEP issues a new permit.
This is contrary to what I heard from the argument at the DEP a year ago. My second question has to do with the percolation lagoon. If you gentlemen will remember, there was a development called HMF, which was six office buildings immediately on the other side of Willowbrook from the Prudential property and several of them on the other side of Route 34. They were proposing in 2001, a lagoon of similar size, about 600 feet on the, from this current lagoon on their property. This development was reviewed by John Trelle from Dan Raviv Associates, a hydrologist. And there was testimony in this room for the board, again, the Board of Public Utilities. The seasonal high water table under that proposed lagoon of similar size, and I have the drawings, was turned down because the seasonal high water table was too high for proper percolation. So the question is, have you done any studies on the ground, percolation tests, et cetera, right at that lagoon?
No, but we are planning to do that.
Right, but you're, you're, you're asking
It is an existing lagoon currently.
The overload, according to the DEP documents I read a year ago, this lagoon was on the verge of over-topping in 2014. My question is, well, I know the spray irrigation never was instituted, but, and is not functional at this time. Do you plan to rehab the spray irrigation? And is it correct that whatever lawn area the spray irrigation consisted to what they did on the original permit, whatever lawn area that irrigation is, that effluent, processed effluent is sprayed on, people can't walk there. Needs to be fenced off.
It's currently fenced off.
No, no, and it will be. And are you upgrading the spray irrigation?
There's no plan to upgrade the spray irrigation. It's
According to DEP at this point, it looks like it's non-functional as of 18.
I'm not aware of that being non-functional, but it, it will need to be rehabilitated if there's any portion of it that does not work.
Right. So half the year, two and a half, two miles up from our, the Swimming River Reservoir, which we all drink from, you are going to be putting the water straight into the stream. This is a grandfather project. Would something like this ever been with a lagoon been permitted if this was a totally new development from ground up at this time?
I'm not quite sure how to answer if it's a new project. It's currently permitted through DEP.
Right, I understand that. But if we were for a million dollars to tear down the main building and start from scratch with a totally new plan and start from scratch with a totally new plan, would the DEP require totally different type of, assuming the package plant was still allowed by the County Water Quality Management documents, would you have to rebuild a totally new plant and system? Not dependent on a lagoon?
No, if, if anything was changed on the site, there's a current surface water and groundwater discharge permit through DEP, that wouldn't change. It just gets renewed and gets upgraded in any requirements through DEP.
Is this a grandfathered project?
I think I, I think I touched on before that, I think they said the regulations are gonna be brought to current standards, not the grandfather. Am I wrong? Would I, right. I'm not talking, please, everyone's gotta stop. We don't wanna get through this meeting. I'm talking to the professionals here.
Yes.
To the applicant.
My understanding is, this is an area that's designated as in need of redevelopment and consequently, the stormwater and the effluent processing has been grandfathered, understanding that DEP is not gonna make, is gonna, whatever they normally do, it's going to be done. But would the design, if this was not a grandfathered project, have for this plant and this whole system of handling effluent wastewater, would it be different?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, rephrase the question. So Jordan, if the property was completely vacant, there was no wastewater treatment plant on there today, could you build a wastewater treatment plant that you're proposing?
Yes, the, in any new plant, it would have to be totally permitted through DEP for a brand-new site.
Right, but would it, would it have a lagoon and spray irrigation and 50% of the year, the processed wastewater would go into the stream?
I can't say that for a brand-new facility.
If it meant DEP permits?
If, if it, yeah, if, if that met the, the DEP requirements, then yes, this could be permitted because it is permitted today.
Right. My understanding, and I ask yours, this DEP is distinctly understaffed, as many organizations are. And DEP relies on self-certification of the engineers for the developer to rely on their integrity and licensing to make sure that this system will work. In other words, the engineering details are not being, being re, I guess, is self-certification functioning as I just described it?
There's no self-certification with DEP. They have to approve and renew all of their permits and applications.
Right, so do they review the engineering documents that Colliers is presenting?
Yes, they will have to.
And you established that you have spoken to the previous people running this plant, I presume. I worked in, in this building in 1983. I'm familiar with the building. That you've spoken to them and that they, contrary to the information I have from DEP, had no violations and no problems with this system?
We didn't say that. We were, there were violations, but we didn't operate the plant at that time and that's one of the reasons being upgraded to make sure there are no violations.
So you're telling, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to phrase it that way. What is our liability if, after all, the town, the township committee has signed an agreement with the developer for, at Phase 3 as a nursing home? Phase 4, I mean.
Three.
Three. Okay. What is the situation if indeed the town has agreed, Township Committee, the redevelopment plan, for all of these buildings to be built? What is the town's liability if indeed the package plant is not up to it? In essence, will you then be producing a new package plant that will have greater capacity and be a trigger for even more development?
So there's a couple of questions and then let me try and unpack that. So there is a redevelopment agreement between the developer and the town, but the redevelopment agreement essentially makes sure that we build in accordance with the redevelopment plan. So there's no quote liability to the town. And the other thing is regarding the redevelopment agreement and the redevelopment plan as well, is that we have to show that we can build it in accordance with those requirements and including taking care of wastewater. So we will not be exceeding whatever the DEP requirements are for wastewater and their minimum requirements for discharge and we, the plant will not be increased in capacity.
So the, the limit on the size of the plant is written into the redevelopment plan so that?
It, it's, it, the side, the capacity of the lagoon, we're, we have represented, we are not going to increase the capacity, one. So the physical plant is not being increased to handle additional gallons per day. Two, we cannot, because DEP permit limits us to 40,000 gallons per day. So DEP makes a decision, DEP has decided 40,000 gallons a day is the capacity.
So you're saying the town will not have to grant you and the county additional capacity supposedly we have in 10 years from now, newer ways for handling the effluent and you stay within your 40,000 gallons? You, you won't have to rebuild the plant?
I can't predict what's gonna happen in the future.
Muddled, that was muddled.
No, I, I understand, I understand where you're going with the question, no worries.
I could help too. Roberta, if there's, if this is approved, that will be a condition from this board, that they will not build a new plant.
As you remember, the four-inch pipe that serves the clean rooms at Bell Laboratories functionally inadvertently provided sewer service for the whole, whole 475 acres and now we have, you know, 145 townhouses and 50 McMansions on that property when it was originally proposed and approved for only 20% coverage so that they could build a six-story building. So we have seen things go downhill over time with limitations, you're saying?
That wasn't by this board and, and not to get into details, there was a dispute whether it serviced the whole property or just the building, but that wasn't this board, so just so you know.
Yeah, well, of course, I'm going back 20 years. Oh, sorry, I have one more question and I apologize.
Take your time.
Okay. I apologize, so thank you for your time, but.
Thank you, Roberta.
Oh, I know what it is, I got it. Sorry. The stormwater handling on this process, and I know you have a traffic engineer, I don't see an engineer for stormwater. This would never be permitted. The stormwater handling is being piped directly at currently, under parking lots and being dumped directly into the stream, taking the, the particulates and all that are on the parking lots straight to the stream today. I understand that you, unlike the new stormwater regulations, which would require an infiltration basin and, in essence, a rain garden for every two and a half acres of development, is you are not subject to that because you're grandfathered. So the question is, what are you going to do to mitigate this piping that you plan to reuse when you dig up the parking lots?
Our engineer was here last week, month and testified to that, that the stormwater system will comply with all DEP regulations.
But not with the new regulations of March 2021?
I don't think we have to comply with those because we're not increasing the, the impervious coverage. Actually, this project reduces the existing pervious coverage on the property. So we're making it better.
Even after the town builds at its expense the first aid station to help out with the over 55 population there? Okay, but this is, this is a stormwater system that has been grandfathered again and will not, not be up to new stormwater standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, did you, Mark, Mr. Flegger, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just gonna say that was testimony from their engineer last meeting.
I apologize.
Hi, Vince Wadaka, Seven Ladwood Drive. I think a lot of.
I'm sorry, could you spell your last name, please?
W-L-A-D-I-K-A. I think a lot of us have an issue when, they spoke earlier about 40,000 gallons versus 45,000 gallons, which I believe Mr. King brought up. So just so we have better edification. Currently, as it sits now in an empty building, it's a 40,000 gallon treatment plant, correct?
That's correct.
And that was built to basically service a building that at its peak housed a few thousand people from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So 1,700, thank you. So now you are proposing the same exact system, yes, with some upgrades, that are now going to service a 55 and over community center, plus a filled building, plus a nursing home. I'm, I guess a lot of us are having some significant difficulty understanding how 40 now still works when it's going to be massively bigger. And I think Mr. King brought it up earlier when he talked about 40 versus 45. Even your own projection. Now, by the way, you said, oh, if we hit the cap at 40, well, what if you hit the cap after Phase 2? I don't know a single developer in the entire world who's gonna give up Phase 3 and Phase 4 because then they're gonna go bankrupt. So I'm not sure how this is actually gonna work, if you wanna be honest.
So is, that's the question.
So I'll defer to you now to rephrase if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the public, as testified before, there are DEP regulations that indicate how? That, that indicate how the flow is determined regardless of it's one building, two buildings?
Well, maybe, maybe, listen, what I've been trying to do all night is sort of speak more of a layman to people to understand certain things here a little bit, okay? Because I don't think people truly understand maybe some of the regulatory stuff. When they come with the flow, right, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not just based on the size of it, but it's the use of the building, right? There's a certain amount based on how, if it's a business facility or it's a healthcare facility or it's a residential facility and they have certain formulas that are, right, that they determine this, right?
That's correct. So if it's an office building, it's usually either off of square footage or the number of people. So as was mentioned, the number of people for the full, the full capacity of the office building, it's a lot less because you have people there just during the day, per person. For somewhere where somebody lives, it's usually on the average of 100 gallons per day per bedroom. So less people, but more flow per bedroom for the new development. I hope that, that's how it's projected with the DEP flows and those are the projected flows of the usage.
So you're basically saying that, yes, we know because people are there 24 hours a day, they're gonna use more water per person, but there's less people technically than it was if it was a fully occupied office building at 100% occupancy?
That's correct.
Right, okay, so. Yeah, if, if you wanna speak.
Just for my, just for my own clarification.
You got another question, you gotta come up to the mic.
Right, just, just try and keep the questions succinct.
We, we just gotta catch you on the record, so.
I just wanna make sure we all understand all this. We're talking about senior housing. We're talking about a few low-income housing, which I have nothing against, but we're talking about people who are going to be in their homes a lot more than young professionals with kids who are at high school and whatever. So whatever the DEP standards, are those the standards for like 2 to 95? Or are those the standards for 55-plus?
The numbers are the same, but there's also been studies that show that age-restricted actually use less water usage, less wastewater.
God, please give me that bill.
So just to clarify for myself, you're here tonight for Phase 1 approval, correct?
For this level of detail, yes, sir.
Yes, okay, so if and when that gets approved, whatever happens, before you could do anything with 2, you'd have to come back before the planning board again with your current statistics and calculations and where you're currently at and where you would projectively be if you built Phase 2?
We, when, when we come back for Phase 2, 3, and 4, everything will be re-reviewed. What I don't know is how soon we'll be back for Phase 2, if we'll have that much operational. But we're certainly, and Mr. Volk can testify to this, but we're certainly, for Phase 1, 2, and most of 3, there's no question we can meet it without knowing the actual flows. But again, as we come back, if we have actual flows, we will make the board aware of that. We will give the calculation to show, okay, we're at Phase X and Phase 1 and 2 have whatever existing actual flows. So yes, if we have that, we will bring it to you. And again, end of the day is, we can't go over the 40,000. If we can't build all of the phases, then that's what we're stuck with.
And just to clarify again, their initial numbers is based on empirical data and formulas. And what they're saying is, when they start building it gradually from phase to phase, they're gonna have real data. Am I wrong? Real data?
That's correct.
Hand down. Real data, that's gonna show exactly what the, the effluent is or the discharge is and then we cannot exceed 40,000 under any circumstance, is that correct?
That's correct. There's a flow meter of the flow coming into the plant.
So despite what this other gentleman brought up, if through 2 phases, we're at the max, that's it, we're capped and we can't do anything more, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Can she come back up again if she was here?
I just wanna give that gentleman, yeah, yeah.
Jay in L-18 Ladwood Drive. As some of you know, I was on the ad hoc committee that assessed the alternatives for the Vonage property. And we had, I don't know, eight or nine meetings. We heard a lot of options, we considered a lot of options, the pluses and minuses. And we concluded that this plan was okay.
This is, this is not comment, Jay. It's if you have a question of the at what's this, please ask.
I just wanted to give that background.
Okay.
So, but what, what we were assured on that committee was.
Is this a question?
This, yes. This company, Bill and everyone who lead, is absolutely hell-bent, determined to make sure this water treatment plant is gonna work right and everything for the community. We're like, okay. So I and everyone else here are gassed at the idea that this board is expected to vote on this tonight or anytime soon without you even having done one percolation sample. Especially in a building that's been empty for I don't even know how long. How long is this building?
Is.
So the question is.
Thank you.
How in God's name can you, sir, assure us? I forgot your name, sir, with the yellow tie. You assured us, oh, there's no problem with Phase, it's not even. How can you say that in a building or a system that's been effectively not used for, I don't know, let's say, two years? And without even a percolation test? Because I agree, I stood out there. Quick comment in front of that.
No comment. Just please ask the question.
Hundreds of Canadian geese crapping in there, all this.
Is that your question, like how can you assure the compliance, right?
No, first of all, this committee cannot vote on this without a percolation test. And I don't think.
Sir, sir, we'll decide what this committee could vote on.
Or anyone else that guided that committee should allow it.
Ask the question or you could please sit down.
How can you come forward with this application with confidence without doing a percolation test in a facility like that that's been idle for so long?
I think quite simply is that we need the permit from DEP. Until DEP's satisfied, not a drop goes in there. So DEP has to be satisfied that the system works.
Why wouldn't you have this information to present to the community and the board tonight? To let us know what those perks look like?
Once again, Jay, we have, we, no, but we have no say in that.
No, you do have a say.
We do not have a say.
You can say, we're not voting on this till we have the perk test.
That's not true.
That's what a sane board would do. No, we're not voting on it, we need the perk test.
No.
And that's, if you're listening, Rocco, Rocco and Prevedudo and the whole township committee, you should not allow a vote on this unless we have perk tests, okay? What, is that crazy?
It, it is outside the jurisdiction of this board.
No, it's not. The board should say, we're not voting on it till we see the percolation in that facility.
Then the applicant can sue us, I mean.
For what, on what grounds? On what grounds?
They're not our jurisdiction.
Let them sue us.
Jay?
What?
It's not our jurisdiction to rule on their, on their, on their water treatment plant. That's DEP, not this board. If it was, even if it was a house.
Because if it fails, we could be on the tab, right? Like the, like the woman or gentleman said, there's no bond. We would be on the tab if this thing starts puking everywhere.
And that question was asked and you heard the answer that he was given, but.
What was the answer?
He said they're not gonna bond. They're not required.
So then you as a board and you as the board's attorney have the responsibility to make sure that can't happen. Scott, why are you laughing?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking, hey, I'm not laughing.
Well, you're sparking.
Because I'm trying to explain to you for, for the 30th time that you could sit here and, and orate as much as you want. We have no say over it.
No, you have a say saying, you get the perk test.
We can only vote, we're voting on whether the, they met the requirements of their application at this point and they're proceeding to move forward.
They didn't meet the requirements.
Sir, I've listened to you pontificate for an hour here. Let me talk. Let me talk. So, they still have to go through the process. If they need to provide the percolation test and whatever testing they have to do to satisfy the government's and the agency's requirements, they're going to do. It's got nothing to do with us. Just like with people coming in and make comments about the highways or doing this, that's got nothing to do with us. We are here to hear their application. If they have certain requests that have variances or waivers, we can discuss those waivers. But they have every right, just like you as a homeowner, have a right to build your house in accordance with the codes. And you don't make assurances to your neighbors that your septic is going to not fail, or there's remedial measures for that under the law if something like that happens. But that's outside our jurisdiction.
We, you as boards are supposed to protect the town and, and the citizens of the town.
If you don't have any more questions, then sit down.
You obviously have a problem with the idea that we could be held liable if that thing fails. Okay, I'll ask, I'll get to my next question. The fact that you don't see that is very interesting. What is the projected cost of these upgrades?
I don't know if we have a cost. What's the point of the cost?
What's the point of the cost? It's a basic question. You list a litany of things that you're upgrading or high-grading or improving. What's the projected cost of it?
We don't have the cost.
You don't have the cost?
I don't have it with me.
That's interesting. Well, you're the engineer, are you not? Do you have the projected cost?
He answered your question. He doesn't have the cost. I mean, I'm trying to move this along. There's 100 people here. He asked you, asked the question, he answered it.
I agree with these people. You seem curiously curious on this application. What was the maximum prior output during Vonage or Prudential of that facility into that 40,000 max unit?
I haven't looked back at the past.
You haven't looked back? I, I mean, this is, this is like an SNL skit. You haven't looked. You haven't done a perk test. Okay. And can I ask you, the hundreds or more of Canadian geese that frolic in there and crap in there, what impact does that have on any of this?
There's, I'm not really sure what the question is.
It was a clear question. What impact do the often hundreds of Canadian geese that crap in that facility have on the functioning of the facility?
There's no regulation, we're talking about wastewater, but there's no regulation on the geese on the site.
No, I'm not asking about regulation. I'm saying, how does that affect the environmentals of the whole project? The algae, the. No, I'm just, I mean, okay. I'm just going to end and say, again, as a person on that board, we were convinced that this water treatment thing would be sealed up, buttoned down. And the fact that they're coming here and asking you to vote without a perk sample is completely outrageous and fraudulent to that committee I was on. And I hope the TC is all listening because they should stop this meeting right now and not allow a vote because of that one point alone.
Matt Weisfeld, 10 Riverside Lane. We all got me? Because I think we all should hear this. This is kind of super important. Anyway, hi, guys. First, I totally get it. From a business standpoint, you guys got to do this stuff. You guys got to get the bottom line and make as much money as humanly possible, even if half them might die. But that's okay. So, going forward with it, I just have to know, first off, is there any chance of any of this stuff leach? I mean, do you guys have children? Is there any chance of any of this leaching into the water, which is still seen? I mean, he asked a lot of really easy questions, I felt. I'm still wondering, is there going to be a liner? Will there be a liner, if this is a thing? Because I know nothing about this stuff. But I am a one-issue voter, and that's what's good for my children. And I live here, and we all drink the, do you guys live in Holmdel? I'm just curious.
You have a question you can ask, ask him now.
Anyway, I'm sorry, my apologies. My question is, to move to Phase Two, what has to happen?
We would have to prepare a detailed site plan for Phase Two and come before the board for a site plan approval.
But there's a vote tonight for Phase One.
That's correct.
So, if we don't want to get to Phase Two, they just don't have to vote in favor of this, and we're all good here?
We, we don't have to go in any particular order. We could come back with our next application for Phase Four, and then come back for Phase Three, and then Phase Two. They're just being built in phases. They just gave them numbers. We decided to call.
So, it's arbitrarily as the DEI, whatever nonsense stuff about health?
I'm not sure what that means. But again, we're here for Phase One for a site plan approval. When Phase Two or Three or Four, whichever one is ready next, we'll then come to the board for a site plan hearing.
So, this isn't a done-deal agreement? Like, I'm kind of getting the vibe that this is a done deal, whatever.
There's no, there's no done deal here. We, we are coming before the board for a subdivision to give the town five acres for free. We're coming for a site-wide preliminary, and we're coming for Phase One site plan. So, that's what we're here for. And, and the board is handling, they handle, like, they handle any other site plan application. This is not unusual. I've been before many boards. I represent many boards. What you're seeing tonight goes on every night of the week in every municipality throughout the state. There's nothing unusual here. There's no done deal. We have to come back for site plan approval for each phase. So, there's no done deal. We come here like any other applicant. If I was building an addition on my house, I come the same way. We come to the board, we show we meet the requirements, the board votes.
Hold on. And actually, I'm really quick because I appreciate you taking the time. What's your name again?
My name is Carl Kem.
Carl, I appreciate you taking the time to explain it to me and everything else.
No worries.
And that, because I'm really not sure. I don't want to say anything about that, but I don't know. But, on the flip side, it sounds like there's a lot of questions, and we're not rushing this. Am I correct?
The board will make its own decision. We're not telling the board they have to.
But you're good with taking time. You guys want to do this right.
Whatever the board feels is appropriate is what we will do. It's the board's.
See where we're getting at, guys?
It's the board's hearing, and the board will determine the pace of the hearing, when it's closed, when it's voted on. We would obviously prefer to do it sooner rather than later, but that is.
I understand.
That's the board's decision. That's the chairman's job, as he's been doing his job all night, is to make sure it moves at the proper pace and it's vote when it's ready for a vote.
Well, I feel a little rushed right now, and this, no offense, because actually, you probably deal with a lot of nonsense, and it probably gets very rough. So, I'm giving you credit for that. However, I am really concerned, and frankly, everything I've heard, I've been here my whole life. I can live anywhere in the world, and I'm ready to move. I'm ready to leave. Because if there's even a 1%, there's even a 0% chance, and my kids are already planning on buying my house. So, I'm stuck, guys. I got to make sure that this drinking water is good. And you seem very reasonable. So, it sounds to me, if as a society and a community, we wanted to do this right, and we were to ask you, I'm ignoring them because, with love, with respect, apologies. But, if we were to ask for more time to do these studies, to do this right, to make sure that we do this the right way, so we don't drag it out in the sense of having 1,000 meetings, can we have that time?
As indicated before, and I know nobody likes the answer, the DEP will make sure it meets every requirement, as is indicated, the flow.
He has to say that.
The flow.
No, no, look, look. It doesn't have to say it. Just like if you had an accounting issue with your taxes, the IRS has certain rules. That's the agency that oversees the, the safe drinking water in the whole state of New Jersey. They're not going to allow them to do something, and I would be shocked if they did, let them, allow them to do something that's going to compromise the water supply to this town.
However, guys, I've got a water filtration. I brought it up to the TC. Sorry, guys, I'm actually a little ticked off at you all for not listening and being full of it in this past election. So, I'm just going to go there. The question is, how come my water treated, I've got a double filtration system because, you know, we went a little nuts, and every time, it is rust brown after six months. And I've checked, I don't know about water, guys. I bring it to people who know more than me, and they're all like, Matt, what's going on? What did I do? I emailed the TC. Sorry, guys. I emailed it twice. I put it on Facebook. I made it out there. So, I see it in my double filtration system. And I, and my apologies, I didn't mean to go in a soapbox. I got a little excited. My point is, you seem very reasonable. You want this to happen. I want my kids safe. I don't care what we have to do, as long as it's right.
We want, listen, we need a question. You can orate later, if you want, if you want to make a comment.
Do you drink water?
I do drink water.
I, I don't, do you kids drink the water? Because if I, my kids drank the water, which they do, well, actually, no, they don't. I don't trust this water. I drink Poland Spring or whatever from Costco. I, no, there's all these unanswered things.
This isn't a nightclub. If you have a question. Ask him his question, you'll answer it, so we can get to the rest of the people in this room.
If you guys are willing for the time, how come they're not going to give us the time?
Again, we already answered that. But to your, to the point that I think you're trying to make is, there are federal and state laws regarding drinking water. So, it doesn't matter where the water comes from to the reservoir to be, to be processed and delivered to your house. There's federal and state standards that have to be met. So, it doesn't matter how it's coming from our property. Again, we will meet all the requirements under state and federal law for the water that comes out of this property. But again, the water that comes to your home complies with all federal and state laws. So, I can't speak to why your filters are brown. I can't speak to any of those issues.
Neither do our town, so it's okay.
But again, that, that's the process.
Well, I don't think we can get any more out of this. Thank you, guys, and.
Hey, there's actually one I just.
Someone else come up and speak, please.
You asked a question in the beginning, if I have children. I do, and I live in this town. I have children that live here, and I drink the drinking water. And if you have a complaint on the drinking water, New Jersey American Water provides the water to you, that's the, that's the company to go to for a complaint.
I'm sorry, I, I have to apologize. I'm not sure who you are.
He's the, he's the, he's the engineer for the applicant, who's giving you.
Perfect. So, that, that means then everything.
He's saying that he, well, no, what he's saying to, instead of writing the town, you should be writing the American Water.
New Jersey American Water.
New Jersey American Water, who supplies you the water. The town doesn't supply you the water. They supply you the water. If there's an issue, you should contact them, and they could figure out the issue is. If something is wrong, and it's someone's at fault, they'll fix it. I mean, Swimming River is, collects water from where?
So, notifying the town is useless.
From the Swimming River.
Well, where is it? What town serves by Swimming River?
That's in a number of towns.
Number of towns, right? And so, all these towns all around us. Supply water that goes through the ground, which is a natural filter for the, for the, so that's what Mother Nature did, right? The water hits the ground, it goes to the ground like a coffee filter, and it cleans itself out, goes into the streams and winds back up in the river, and then they treat it there, right? That's basically the premise.
See, he's got it, you know? That's fantastic. Well, okay. Anyway, on that note.
Okay. All right, yeah. That's all right.
Anyway, that's enough.
Thank you.
I've got one quick question for you. DEP is reviewing your application right now, correct?
They're reviewing the renewal permits, yes, yes.
If DEP comes back and says, this doesn't meet the standard, what happens to your application? What happens to the application before us? Do you build a single unit at that point?
Well, what would happen is, DEP is renewing the surface water and, and the groundwater permits. If they come back and there's more stringent requirements on those, we would have to change the design of the wastewater treatment plant to increase the, the filtration and make sure that we meet whatever levels are in that, that permit.
Right, and at some point.
And that would happen in perpetuity going forward, as it's renewed every five years. Thank you.
Right, and wait, I'm sorry, you, you wanted to say something, right? Come on up? Yeah. No, no, I forgot what I was going to say.
Peter Manary, 59 Bethany Road in Holmdel. Getting back, I need to ask you a question, so I can ask the right question. The six months, summer months, and the freezing six months, how does that work there as far as the effluent going into the pond?
Sure, so the, the way that it's permitted with DEP is, the lagoon is the, under the groundwater discharge permit, and that's permitted in the summer months from April to basically the end of October. Starting November through the end of, I believe it's March, is when the, the water is permitted to go to the, the surface water, which is the discharge to the east branch of the Willowbrook.
So, the functionality and the criteria, and with all that goes with that, because I know nothing about really any of this, but I do know, in 1960, in the 60s, 70s, we used to have snowstorms, freezing grounds. We don't have that anymore. So, how is your effluent? Look at November, what is it, 65 degrees the other day? So, take the DEP, what is the ramifications to make? There's no freezing ground. Why haven't taken out a snow blower in three years? Not in three years. Nobody even plows here anymore. So, how does that, you, this town, are going to address the non-freezing ground? How? Because we're into November, we're going to December, the ground's not freezing. You're talking about six months here, six months there. Forget it. It's going to be 10 months with unfrozen ground in two years. That's Mother Nature? That's not DEP helping us and their requirements. So, figure it out and bring that to this next meeting.
Yes.
Thank you to the board for letting me come up again. Anne Bon Tempo. I want to know, do you know the age of the current system?
I don't know the age of all the components. There's components that are original, there's components that have been added over the years of the treatment plant.
Is the lagoon really original to the system?
No, it's not.
Do you know the age of the lagoon?
I don't know when the lagoon was, was constructed originally.
Do you know when the spray system was constructed?
That was constructed in 2005.
And to the best of your knowledge, it's never been used?
From what the operators have told me, yes.
So, you don't know if it's functional?
We haven't tested it, no.
Okay. And you have no plans at this point, and you're not asking to do any rehabilitation to that system?
It will be tested before it's put online to ensure it's in working order.
Is that going to be, is that going to be when?
Are we permitted to test it right now?
No, there's no water in the lagoon to test it with.
We're not permitted at the moment to test it because.
And you're not requiring, but you're, you will rehab the system?
If there's any rehab necessary with the spray irrigation, yes, it will be rehab.
So, other than the 2005 irrigate, the sprayer system, you have no idea the age of the other system?
There's many.
Any components of the system?
There's many components of the system, which is very.
But you don't know the age of any of them? Do you know the age of any of the systems?
Not exact ages, no.
Do you, as a professional engineer in your capacity and dealing with septic systems, know that there's a certain lifespan on septic systems?[1579.36]
This is not a septic system, but yes, there are lifespans in septic systems, yes.
The lagoon works as a percolating, filtrating system, correct?
Percolation and evaporation, yes.
And you don't know the age of it?
I don't have the original design drawings, I don't know the exact age of it.
And you have not tested it at all for its quality of...
I think we've went down this thing, this testing.
I'm just, I'm leaving that.
Right. But we've, I'm trying to move it along, I'm trying to say, let's stop...
But when you interrupt me, I have to go back.
Well, I'm running this meeting, right? So I'm trying to move things along, right? So he said before, people brought up the testing, he said he hasn't tested. So if you ask him again if he's tested, it's a moot point.
The existing wastewater plant was designed in 1977 to accommodate wastewater from office use. It doesn't seem as though enough consideration has been given to buying a massive land and putting up 24/7 living facilities for a system that they don't know the ages of the components of it, nor have they been able to test any of it, but they're asking for approvals tonight to proceed with Plan One, Phase One.
They're asking for approvals to proceed so they can start the process of doing all these testing and doing the evaluations and doing all the paperwork and going through the process.
Let me ask you something. When you buy a house in Holmdel, do you test your septic system after you buy it or before you buy it?
Do I, if I'm using the existing septic system and it works, yeah, I do test it. If it's not working, then I put it in a price for the buy...
How do you know?
Ma'am, I'm answering your question. You wanna ask a question like that, I'll answer it.
You're not answering my question.
I am asking your question. The thing is, you wanna ask me, what would I do if I bought a house and would I test it? Yeah, if I tested it. And if it didn't work, I would fix it. And when they take over a property or anyone else who comes before us has a similar issue, they're gonna come in, they're gonna test, they're gonna evaluate, and they're gonna rehab it, which he said, to meet the current standard, not go back to the prior standards, some of which he probably can comply with, some grandfathering in there, but they're gonna meet the current standard as if it was new. Am I misspeaking there? Okay.
That's correct.
No, but if you buy a house without testing it, you run the risk of incurring that cost because you're still gonna have to fix it. They're gonna have to fix it if it doesn't meet the standard. You have, they're saying one thing, we have our town professionals that are saying they really have no issue with anything with their proposing, right? They're gonna have to go through the hoops and they're gonna have to test everything and they're gonna do the percolation test. They're gonna make sure that the proper amount of groundwater infiltration in the system would be no different than any other facility that's built in this town or Lincroft or anywhere else. It's gonna all, it's gonna all be the same.
You went beyond the answer of my question, though. I just asked...
Okay, well, I gave you extra.
You pontificated a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yes. So I'm just saying that it seems odd that this is happening in this order. And that the board is going to possibly approve this without having real answers in the numbers.
Once again, we have no jurisdiction on it. Again, we do not...
You have jurisdiction as a planning board.
That's right. To say that they, ma'am...
You are empowered to, for proper land use...
That's right. That's right. And make sure they follow the rules and regulations that are in place to protect the public.
When I sat on the zoning board, if somebody wanted to build a swimming pool in their backyard, but the mitigation to get them to do that because they had maybe too much...
All right, but they're not asking for mitigation. They're following the rules that are in place. They're not asking for mitigation. Ma'am, I'm not gonna debate you. If you have another question for him, then if not, we can move on.
I think it's important to remember that this is for site plan approval. This is not for final approval to build anything. This is not for final approval. You know, there's processes in place. This is the process for site plan approval. So that's why they're coming here and they're testifying to what they're testifying to. And then there's procedures in place. Once that, they reach that hurdle, there are other hurdles they have to reach to be able to build and to be able to, you know, get, move forward with the plan. They can't, tonight's not to move forward with the plan. Tonight's for site plan approval.
Thank you.
That's what we're here for right now. So it's, it's important to try to understand the process because that's only, that's the only thing we can actually...
If you have a question for the witness, let's ask the question. I'd like to get this moving.
I'm just listening to Mr. Ackerson.
Okay, well, I'm asking you to please direct your question to the witness.
I did.
To pick up on Mr....
I was to you, and then I listened to Mr. Ackerson.
To pick up on Mr. Ackerson's answer and answer your question. If the board were to grant site plan approval, before we can pull a building permit, we have to satisfy any other state, county, or local agency that has jurisdiction. So we've talked about DEP. There's DEP for the wastewater, there's DEP for stormwater. We have to go to the county, which we talked about. We have to get Soil Conservation District approval. Any other approval that is needed before we can get a building permit, we must have. The town staff reviews everything to make sure we have all those approvals before they give us one building permit. So all the issues that everyone's concerned about will be addressed by the agency that has authority. So for example, if we were on 34 and we needed to go Department of Transportation, we would have to go down to Trenton, get the approval from the Department of Transportation before we could get our building permit.
I have one last question, and I'm referring to the TM report that was dated September 30th, 2025, under complete and previous review, June 25th, Section 5. A new packaged wastewater treatment plant will be installed to treat the flows. The gentleman from TNM who spoke earlier said that you are not doing that. Is that true?
It's great. We're not, we're not building a new plant. The plan is...
Your wife, did TNM say, developer agreement review process, which will include the following?
Okay. I can't speak for the gentleman who drafted the letter, but I think it is a manner of speaking. He may be thinking new as it's been upgraded and it meets all current standards. But we are not building a brand-new plant. We are upgrading, as Mr. Volker has testified numerous times tonight. We are upgrading and modernizing the current plant to meet all required regulations.
It does talk about the rehabilitation of several things in here, and I noted that, those were in there. But number five also stated this, which you could see from our point is misleading.
Ed, do you wanna just, you wanna chime in just so we can...
Yeah. Can maybe TNM explain why they use the word new? But again, we are not building a new plant.
This was sent to Mr. Christopher Charbini, Township Administrator.
Ed Herman, TNM responding. The, my understanding is the original plans that we saw had a few components that were proposed to be new, some standalone features such as a C-Box type of unit. That was taken off the table in favor of basically just doing rehab of the existing facilities, no new structures.
Right, okay.
When were you made aware of this?
I think right around the time of the first hearing, within short order.
Was that before or after September 30th?
I think it was after... I don't read. Do you guys recall the conversation?
I wasn't involved. I don't know. But the bottom line is, I think you're convinced that DEP will make us comply with all the standards that are needed, whether it's new or it's been upgraded.
Just to eliminate any doubt, it's not new, so we don't have to ask it's new anymore. It's gonna be renovated or retrofitted to meet the current standard.
Yes.
So, and... Yeah, it'll be in the resolution, yes. Not on, probably not on their letter, it'll be in the resolution.
It was just clarified through testimony.
Yeah, it's on the record. All right. I'll come up, sure.
Hello, thank you. Charles Sharp, Brookview Court. Mr. Volker, just two questions. I think, you know, we're all trying to understand, you're the expert here. If there was a scenario where you went, the facility, whether it's all four phases or if it's just one, if it went for 50,000 gallons one day, explain how that would, how the system would handle that.
So the equalization tank that I mentioned is the tank at the front of the plant, and that is designed to smooth out the flows going through the plant. So what can happen is the flow comes from the existing buildings to the pump station at the equalization tank. That will be able to smooth out the flow, so you won't, you won't see that type of high flow. You will see maybe peaks during the day. You won't see that type of a high level going through the plant.
Right, but just like 50,000 over the course of one day, maybe, you know, for whatever reason, you know, it's not expected, but that happens, right?
Let's say the Super Bowl, because everyone talks about the Super Bowl. How's that, right? If there's a Super Bowl and they're all watching, they all flush their toilet at once, kinda thing, what's that gonna do?
There could be a single-day exceedance on the levels, but the plant is always designed with additional capacity from a treatment perspective. The permits we're talking about are the discharge permits to lagoon and to the stream. So even if flow...
There might be a retention for the overflow.
Even if flow went higher, the plant's always designed to treat a little more flow than what actually is permitted on the discharge side, so there wouldn't be concern. And the licensed operator of the facility would have to take testing results to comply with all the discharge levels on the permits.
And one other question. So, you know, as you are the expert here and the engineer, if this site was farmland, okay, and the proposal was to build the number of units that we're proposing here, what sort of wastewater system would you design?
If, I mean, this is just pure speculation. We have a plan for this that complies with standards and it's built accordingly.
I mean, look, I understand, I understand where the question's coming from, but at the end of the day, we're not doing that, so it's a moot point.
But the Holmdel Committee has to give approval, right?
Well, okay, but... You understand, the redevelopment has been approved by the Township Council, right? It might, right? It's approved.
Right, right, but I'm just saying the...
So here, we're just talking about some of the engineering issues to make sure that they've submitted the right paperwork and that they're gonna do the right thing and that our professionals have reviewed their plans to make sure that they're not doing anything that's out of the ordinary or that our professionals feel may require a variance or a waiver of some sort of regulations. And that's kind of what we're voting on today. We're not voting on their system. They still have to meet...
I think the bond that was brought up earlier is a good failsafe for the township there. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, come on up, yeah. If it's one quick one, you can ask one quick one. Okay, one quick one.
Pete Franco again, and to answer your question, I'm with a question. That system was put in 1977. Lagoons, typically the percolation lagoon that you're talking about, have a service life of, I'm sorry? The lagoon, the percolation lagoon that they're talking about has a service life of between 20 and 30 years. This is almost 50 years old. The unlined lagoon that we're talking about, do you have some sort of, and that's with a well-treated one. This has been vacant for four years now. It's been abandoned. You can go through there, you can see it. It's disgusting, by the way. Do you have a mitigation plan? Would that be considered hazardous material once they try to excavate this lagoon next to the Willowbrook?
So there was a few questions. I'll kind of address each one. The first aspect from 1977, the lagoon is not the original aspect of the design. The plant is also not the original plant. I think that was brought up earlier, you know, how does a plant of that age? There have been modifications to the plant over the years, and the lagoon was constructed after the original plant. It was originally a leach field to begin with.
But we don't know what year.
I don't know the exact year that the lagoon was constructed. To answer your next question, any material, now that it is dry, if that was to be mucked out, that would have to be disposed of properly, would have to be tested and disposed of properly per DEP environmental regulations.
And removing the lagoon, how would that affect the Willowbrook?
Removing?
If you had to excavate the lagoon and you had to line it and put it back, say, up to some sort of standard, DEP, whatever?
Well, there wouldn't be a liner with the lagoon. This isn't like a retention pond on the stormwater side, so there wouldn't be a liner.
Ken Lehner, do I have to turn this on?
Nope, it's on.
Okay.
Put it near your mouth.
I live in Whining Brook Way, which is half-mile from the facility, so sort of interested. From an engineering perspective, what's the maximum that this plant can handle? Maximum flow?
As I mentioned before...
No, I mean, instantaneous flow.
Oh, the maximum instantaneous flow? That I don't, I don't have an answer to.
So, okay, let's say it's, whatever it is, it's exceeded. What happens?
So you're saying, so let me, let me just make sure I'm getting the question correct.
There's a limit to how much inflow it can take, am I right?
There, there is.
We don't know what it is, but there is some maximum.
That would be analyzed when we look at the rehabilitation of the plant. If it is exceeded, there could be exceedances on the testing results on the discharge side, and there would be violations to the operator if that did happen.
So that is a possibility. So the 39,350 gallons per day, which is remarkably just below the 40,000, is a little dicey. So it's, and that's an average, so the variance is gonna be quite a bit, I would think, or there's gonna be some. This could happen, right? Very eas, not easily, but it could happen.
That's why there's the equalization tank at the head of the plant to smooth out the flows.
There's a limit to how much that equalization tank can take in, in a given point in time, correct?
Yes, it's a finite size of a tank, yes.
If you could pass it at halftime during the Super Bowl, there's a problem. There could be a problem there, right?
The rehabilitation of the plant will be designed with a factor of safety above, as I mentioned earlier, above the permitted discharge flow.
Understood. And again, I repeat, there is a point at which it cannot handle it, right?
There's always gonna be a point, yes.
There's a point in the sewers of the city that it can't handle.
So, just for the record, it's very possible that that limit can be exceeded and then there would be problems and violations, right?
Well, I don't know. Would there be violations or just issues?
So I'm asking him. There's only the potential for violations.
But I think the question of what you're saying as far as very, like, very possible that it can be exceeded, you're saying. Well, Phase One, which we're talking about here tonight, is a certain number of units. I don't know the number. Capacity is 40,000 per day discharge, correct? But we're not even close to that with Phase One because this is the initial phase. So once that's rehabbed, built, tested, after a year worth of data and we look at it, then they come back for Phase Two, or whatever phase you wanna go for next, I guess, as we said earlier, then we would be like looking at that again and evaluating it based on the numbers. So I don't know that that's a fair question. I'm just saying, for the first phase, would that, was that, is it, I'll ask you the question. Is it probable that that amount would be exceeded by the first phase?
No, that's highly unlikely.
Okay, because I think that's what we're trying to get at. We're, this is incremental, so we're, let's not get off the, you know, too far off the road here. I think it's important, at least for me, to understand that from you. And, you know, this is, this is the kind of thing we have to understand what's going on here, what we're actually voting on.
One of the reasons I ask that is, as a engineer in a former life, one of the things I learned to do is, instead of a postmortem, we look at what happened and what could we do, do a pre-mortem, what could go wrong and what will happen and what can we do?
Yes, and that, right.
That's why I ask that question.
But as an engineer, you know that's...
If it were to happen in Phase One, Phase Two, or Phase Three, or Four, whatever the N is, what would be, what would happen and what would be done at that point? What were the consequences? That's why I ask the question.
All right, so...
And I believe he answered it. It's that it's a possibility that there would be problems which may or may not result in a violation.
Which all have to address at the time, right.
Okay. I just have a curiosity question. Five months of the year you can discharge into the Willowbrook, correct?
Six months. It's the, it's half, half a year, yeah.
Why not do it all year?
That's the way that the current permit is written.
Okay, you've been an engineer in this field for 25 years. What do you think is the reason for that? Why do you need the lagoon if you're allowed six months of the year to discharge into the Willowbrook? Why couldn't you do it year-round?
I can't speak to why DEP wrote the permits the way that they did.
You don't know. What would, okay, but they say you can't.
That's correct, yes. So every surface water discharge permit to a stream is, is written specific for that stream. So there are general guidelines on the permits for the state, but every permit is per the stream you're discharging to.
So for six months, it's okay, but the other six months, it wouldn't be okay, according to the permitting process?
It's most...
Not according to the science?
It's most likely in the summer months because of the fish. Typically, the requirements are because of the aquatic life in the river. So my guess would be, not knowing exactly why DEP wrote the permit, is because during the summer months, you have, you know, more fish breeding, things like that in the river.
And I guess somebody asked this, but I'd like to just confirm, if this were a brand-new project, would your plant be approved? You've been involved, I assume, in new projects, correct?
Yes, because we're designing to meet the current regulations. So yes, it would be.
You could do exactly this for a new plant, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, come on up, miss. Oh, Roberta, can you let the young lady speak? Because she hasn't spoken yet.
Francine Campus, Two Country Squire Lane. I won't repeat all the questions that people have been asking. They've been very serious questions, like, did you find out how much capacity was being processed through that plant when it was an office building? Okay, what were the violations that were issued against that? Because you're claiming you're going to rehabilitate this plant to suffice your new plans, but how do you know you're going to be able to do that if you don't know what problems were in the past? Why that pump was instituted, why we allowed it to go into the Willowbrook? Unless you have those questions, I don't know how I could have any assurance that after you rehabilitate that thing, it's gonna work for what you're proposing, even Phase One, okay? And then I hear...
Was that a question?
Yes.
So let him answer the question.
Okay, but I'll just follow this up, because he can probably answer both questions with one answer. And then I hear, don't worry about it, the DEP is gonna make sure everything's okay. But you haven't even gotten your approvals from DEP. From what I heard, they're in the process of coming to you. So how do you come here and give us that assurance that, excuse me, because I don't mean to insult you because you're the professionals, you know 100% more than me, how do I know that you know what the heck you're doing?
Well, that's, I don't think that's a fair question, but I will say this, miss, to address, to address that comment, okay?
Well, I should rephrase...
90% of the people who come here don't have their DEP approvals. They're coming here first to get the plans approved so they can start the process of going down the road to start doing what they need to do. But they can't do that till they have the approval from the town. It's a process. And if you had a car from 1975, you don't need to know what the mechanic did in 1975. They're gonna inspect the car, they're gonna find out what's wrong with the car, they're gonna fix the car. And if the rules require that car to be brought to a current standard, they're gonna bring the car to the current standard. That's what they do in the engineering profession. It doesn't matter when it was built. It could have been built, the Brooklyn Bridge was built in 1850-something, and they still go in there and they fix the Brooklyn Bridge every day, right? They bring it and they have to bring it up to current standards and codes and things of that nature.
Okay, but I'm also hearing that they grandfathered on a lot of things. And I wanna know why they didn't do this research to give us the assurance. Why?
But they are giving you the assurance. They're giving you, and they're giving the town the assurance that they're gonna do everything that's required under the law to provide safe drinking water and protect the ground and design a system that's gonna, that's gonna work in compliance with all the rules and regulations that are set up to protect the public. That's what they're gonna do.
Okay, so what would happen if after you find out all this stuff, you find out you can't rehabilitate that plant and now you gotta buy a new one, I mean, rebuild a new one?
So I can address that question. So to kind of simplify and explain what we're talking about with rehabilitation, a lot of the aspects of this treatment process are tanks with equipment inside of it. So the equalization tank, it's basically just a large tank, so you have flow as it comes in, so it's kind of a buffer. comes in, so it's kind of a buffer. So that's a, a tank. And the equipment inside it, when we say rehabilitate, that's all going to be brand-new. After it goes out of the equalization tank, the next tank is the aeration tank. It basically has piping, it introduces air, which is part of the treatment process. That's a tank. Everything inside it is being completely replaced. The blowers that push the air through piping is being replaced. After it goes out of that, it goes to a circular tank, which is the clarifier, that's just a tank, and all the equipment inside it's being replaced. The same as the next aeration tank as well. So when we talk about rehabilitation, we're really just reusing the tanks on site. So when I got asked questions of what we do for a new plant, there's a lot of ways to design something to treat, there's a lot of technologies in the wastewater treatment side, but we have existing tanks and existing processes, so we're going to use those processes because they work. And we're going to put new equipment inside of those tanks.
Okay, but if that's the case, they put in a lagoon afterwards, and then they got a permit to go into the tributary, so something wasn't working, even if you replace all that equipment?
Yeah, ma'am, but it could have been an operational issue, maybe they weren't maintaining it properly.
But that's why, why don't we know that?
But they're not, they're not doing it, they're not the old owner, they're going to be the new owner, and if there's violations, when they, if, if this thing goes through and they get all the necessary approvals, and there are issues, it's going to be incumbent upon them to address them, and they're going to have to fix them. And to further answer your question, if they don't get the approvals with the system the way it is, they're not going to be able to build the system. Then they're going to be, their hands are going to be forced, and they're going to have to do something far more extensive to meet the requirements.
Okay, I just ask, why wouldn't you wait for them to at least get the DEP approvals?
Because we don't-
Although, I mean, we hear all across the United States, drinking water was polluted, that was under the jurisdiction of the DEP.
Ma'am, they haven't even done a, a job here yet, and that other gentleman has brown water here, so it's, you know, I don't know what to tell you. It's like, you know-
I'm not complaining about my drinking water-
Okay.
-based on what he's doing. I'm just, I'm concerned that I don't hear, there's tons of questions, and I really haven't heard any answers that would give us a sense of comfort, that we should speed along and go ahead.
Yeah, we're not, but we're, but ma'am, we're not speeding along, it's a process. Okay? In order for them to go to the next step, to start doing this, we have to give them the okay, that's saying, okay, we have no issue with your plans. Now you have to go and prove to us, and prove to the regulating agencies, that you can accomplish what you're proposing here. If you cannot do that, they can't build it. We're not saying, yes, this is going to go, and then tomorrow they're going to be out there with a shovel digging a hole. It's not the way it works. All right, so, you know, whether they came here with a percolation test, or whether they came here with anything else, it's not going to change the fact of what our role is here today. We are just here to say whether we have issue with their proposal, and we are sensitive to everyone's concerns, and they're all going to be addressed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the state, and the federal government, whoever governs that type of work.
Well, if you feel comfortable with the amount of questions that are unanswered-
Well, the, all the questions have been basically about the same thing, about the groundwater, and it's very important, of course, and that's why they will not build something that's going to pollute the, the drinking water, that's going to pollute the ground, because that's the rules of the, of the state. If they comply with the rules, then you have to change, or, listen, everyone, I'm not going to debate to you the, the rules and regulations of the DEP. They exist for a reason. Okay? You can have a difference of opinion all you want, but that's, once again, for the fiftieth time, that's outside the jurisdiction of the ladies and gentlemen sitting at this table. We do not govern wastewater design or, or efficiency, we do not.
Absolutely, but you should feel comfortable with your decision, whether you want somebody to go ahead with-
We want, we want people who are going to come on, whether it's them, you, or anyone else in this room, that's going to come in and develop or build a piece of property, that's going to comply with the rules, that's, that are, that are intended, whether you agree with them or not, they're intended to protect you. And if you have a problem with the way the rules are written, then you have to get the people to change the rules. It's not for us, we're not legislators up here.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, we can't tell them what to do.
I understand that, I understand that, but I think we need to be prudent about moving ahead with progress.
Jay, once again, these questions, they're, they're wonderful questions, but once again, it has no bearing on what we're here to do. So maybe you should understand the role of the, of the planning board, and what we're here to do today about this application. I'm not talking to you right now. I'm not, I, I'm not talking to you right now.
Hi, my name is Elena Gamardella, I live on Stony Brook Road. Where on that-
I'm sorry, what was your first and last name?
Elena Gamardella.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've been looking at this drawing up here. Where on the drawing is the lagoon? Is it that blue thing, or the green thing? The long, okay, and that lagoon is already there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I'm a little concerned with what Mr. Fagan said about odor, aroma, smells. Is that a realistic concern? Is it going to, your development of this property, is that going to cause odors and smells that we are all going to have to live with?
There shouldn't be any concern with that. I, this is, this is an existing treatment plant that has been operating, an existing lagoon. So if there was no odor problems, I don't see whether there'd be odor problems moving forward.
Except that there's just going to be that much more of a discharge into this lagoon than there was prior.
All of the water going to the lagoon is treated by the wastewater treatment plant.
So, okay, thank you. Now, what is it, why does any of this discharge have to go into the stream? Why can't it all just go into the lagoon?
Because of the DEP permit, half the year it's allowed to go to the stream, half the year it's allowed to go to the lagoon.
But, okay, it's allowed, but does it have to? Is there, is that something that can be avoided? Because it seems like it's going to go into the groundwater, we all have concerns about what's going in to the lagoon from the waste, from the treatment, right? People are going to be taking medications and all sorts of things. Can that be avoided?
The treated wastewater has to go somewhere. So that's why there's a lagoon on site that's currently permitted, and a discharge to the stream for the other half of the year. So, as part of your question, you asked, you're kind of asking two things, mentioning the stream or lagoon, it has to go to one or the other, or both, like it does bifurcated during the year.
So normally now, when it was Vonage, was it going into the stream, or was it going just to the lagoon?
Both. So this, this plant, as it's permitted, as it currently sits, could open up, operate under the DEP permit if the office building was full. So this is, this is all a current, existing, operating, permitted plant right now.
Right, but the number of individuals at Vonage is nowhere near what's going to be in your proposal. That's what our concerns-
It's permitted and designed for the full building, for the full office space.
The office space?
Yeah.
But you're not changing that, not to accommodate the new plan, correct?
I'm not.
You're not changing the size of the lagoon to accommodate this new development?
That's correct, as, as we spoke about before, the flow, it's adequate.
I want to ask questions of the board. What are your concerns about this, approving this site plan?
Yeah, once again, we are approving the overall concept of the plan, and we're discussing certain issues that deal with requirements that they're looking to have waived, when it comes to lighting and things of that nature. We are not approving the wastewater treatment, okay?
I understand that.
Okay, I'm going to say it again for everyone. We, we, it's not our, it's just, it's just another box in the application that we have to check, just like if you did a building with landmarks, you need landmarks approval, they need DEP approval, they would need tra- traffic approval, they needed approval from a fire department, they need, they have to fill all these little boxes, and they have to get everyone to approve on it.
Understood.
And that's not what we do.
So what is it that the board is doing tonight? I think we all want to understand, because you keep repeating that it's not within your jurisdiction.
Yeah, it's a process, because we have to put this stuff on the record, we have to explain to the town what's going on, and it gives the town the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, and then make their comments on the record. It still doesn't mean that we could sit there and deny someone the ability to do work that they're legally entitled to do. If, like, and I used this example last time, if you want to put a pool in your backyard, but your neighbor doesn't want the pool, I can't sit there and tell you you can't put your pool in because the neighbor doesn't want it there.
Well, you can, if I'm not abiding by the setback rules, of course you can.
That's right, but they're not that, okay, you just made my point, exactly. Is because-
That's what I'm asking you.
Right.
What is it that they are responding to you? What are they giving you to answer your criteria for giving them site-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to answer your question, as the chairman indicated, the board has certain things they have jurisdiction over, certain things they don't. Like I said, they can't set the speed limit on Route thirty-five, that's under state jurisdiction, we understand that. So, what a board does for a site plan approval that we're here for, is they take the applicable standards in the ordinance to make sure we comply. The ordinance here is the Vonage redevelopment plan. So the redevelopment plan has standards, you can have certain uses, right? We can't put a slaughterhouse in there, right? So they're looking, say, okay, can you build the, the, the senior residential facility? Can you build the assisted living skilled nursing facility? Yes, we can, it's in there, says, we can do those uses, we're not doing a slaughterhouse. Then there is, what are the requirements? So is there impervious coverage requirements, setback requirements, right? All of those requirements, as to physical things, do we meet all of those? And then the board also looks at, which kind of gets more into the engineer's, is, is the site designed properly to handle that, right? So is there adequate roadways? Are there access points, right? Are there, we meet all the other requirements? Do we have the landscaping in place that's required in the plans? Lighting issues, all those other issues that you would do in any other application that if we weren't here tonight. So if someone was coming with a vacant piece of property and building a pizzeria, you would look at all those things. So that's what the board is doing, they're looking at all of our plans and studies with the assistance of the professionals to say, do we have a proper use? Do we meet all the bulk criteria, the side yard setback, the impervious, the trees, the landscaping? And they're looking at all those and say, do they meet that? Yes or no? And if the answer's yes, then as I indicated before, we're not ready to build yet. If there's anyone else in the world we need to go to, like I said, if we had to go to DOT because we're on a, on a state highway, we'd have to go to DOT, get those approvals, come back, and then the staff looks at those and says, okay, you got your DOT approval, you got your planning board approval, oh wait, you need another approval you didn't get, go get that. So, the board is, as the chairman's saying, they're one piece in the whole process to get to a building permit. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss, 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 miss. You asked the question about what our concerns are. So I, three. One, they're very, very specific about, you've heard the word grandfathering?
Yes, sure.
Their grandfathering clause, if they change anything, then there's a whole new set of rules that come about. So they want to be very careful to keep it as is, so nothing has to change, and they can sort of, some people would say slip it in under the tent. I'm not going to say that. Well, Wes, that's not appropriate to say, I mean-
Secondly-
And that's not true.
You, you asked about, why don't you percolate twelve months of the year? My opinion is, is that percol- it was set up to percolate twelve months of the year, and it failed. And then as an emergency solution, they were allowed to discharge the stream and spray it on the lawn. The third item, Mr. Volk testified that he knows of no other place in New Jersey that's like this. He doesn't know of any other place. So to say that a secondary treatment discharged into a percolation lagoon, which Mr. King referred to as an open cesspool, I think that's a better description of what you're going to say, and I think it's outrageous to say that it's not going to smell.
Thank you.
Oh, come on.
Let me clarify while you're still on the, I just want to make sure I get this-
Oh, and before, before Jeff, I just want everyone to know, we usually close the meetings around ten o'clock. Saying, we usually don't have, we don't, we don't go past ten, it's been three hours already, so we're going to let Jeff speak, we'll let this gentleman speak, and unfortunately we may have to come back, you know, we'll, we'll try and get through as quick as we can, but at ten fifteen- Yeah, how many more people have questions? Yeah. Well, you're not, we don't have you at the mic, so. They're, they don't have, they don't have an obligation to make that concession. I would have tried to, look, I don't know how much more I can, how, how much clearer I could say this. I, I understand everyone's concerns. Everyone has a concern about the groundwater, and the geese making poopie all over the place, and the smell, and then this, and everything else in the world, and I get that. And I have similar concerns, too. But I, but it's, I have to believe that when they go to the agencies that represent us, that they're going to do their due diligence and make sure they comply. And if they don't comply, they're going to have to remedy it once they're, take ownership of the building and it's built. Well, I don't think everyone does, because there's a thousand questions asking the same thing.
No, sir, you got to come up to the mic. Well, wait, he's first, this guy got to go first. And Jeff's first.
All right, all right, let's, let's, let's just, I want to get this buttoned up as fast as we can. Good, Jeff. Okay, all right, so go ahead, you want to?
Sure. Excuse me, my name is Ken, Ken G. at HSA Street. Can you guys hear me? Sorry, I have no problem with my voice.
You have to spell your last name, I'm sorry.
Oh my God, really? That's the first time.
G, that's the easiest one.
Okay.
Thanks, Wes, you got it?
Okay, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a question, just to clarify, I, I know the Mr. Chairman had already seemed to address that, and for some of us dummies who don't understand the questions and whatever, it's a number of times people have asked, are you going to line the lagoon? And it seems to me, as a dummy, that lining the lagoon is the exact opposite of what the lagoon is designed to do, because you want it to percolate. So I just want to make sure I'm asking the question-
That's correct.
And I'm making a comment, that basically what you're saying is, whatever concern they may or may not have with, you know, medicines, prescriptions, and the water being processed, the lagoon, as the way you're designed, it was designed, and how you're going to upgrade, will continue that function, whatever is in there will be processed, it will be in the water, it will be in the lagoon, it will either percolate, which means it goes in the ground, or discharge in the stream, is that correct? Question number one.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so there's no liner, so whatever happens will happen. And I believe that the attorney, forgive me if, if I got this wrong, but you have referenced, not the redevelopment plan, but redevelopment agreement. So is that, is there an agreement in place between the developer and the township, so there is already a redevelopment agreement, is that correct?
That's correct, they're two separate things, and there is a redevelopment agreement with the township.
Yes, no, the plan was done last December, that went to the planning board, went back there. Is that in the special meeting in June of this year, or was that before that?
I, I'm sorry, I wasn't involved in the negotiation and the adoption of that redevelopment plan, I just, agreement, sorry, I just knew it was approved.
So I just want to make sure it relates to the waste management. Do you know if the redevelopment agreement has any sections or provisions for waste management? And I realize that the board's procedures and everything is that trust the DEP, and we get that, we understand. But because the redevelopment agreement is a separate arms-length agreement between two willing parties, in this case, the township and a developer, do you know if there's a provision or anything in there regarding waste management, in the event that there's some kind of failure or anything like that?
There, there is a provision in the redevelopment agreement that addresses the wastewater treatment plant. It does not go into that level of detail, it does require us to build it to all the DEP regulations, and to cooperate and provide any information, the township engineer who got up and spoke before, as well as the board engineer, anything they may need in regard engineer, anything they may need in regard to that, that we provide and we cooperate with them, which we have been doing. So there is a provision, but doesn't have that last piece that you wrote.
Okay, so it's clearly, it's a requirement, something you have to do anyway, but it sounds like, but there's nothing else in the event that there's some failure or anything like that, does not require, as one gentleman suggested, some kind of performance bond, does not require other remedy or anything like that, that, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. It doesn't have that level of detail, and I don't want to speculate as to why, but usually it's not, because there is a mechanism to enforce that. Like, for example, you wouldn't have a provision, redevelopment agreement says, you're going to drive the speed limit or you're going to get a fine. Well, the police take care of that. If people are speeding, then the police is the jurisdiction, and they enforce it, and they're right to fine. So I don't think it was put in, because here, again, DEP will permit it, and they'll determine whether there's compliance.
No, I appreciate that. I've drafted many, I've been involved in many negotiations and so on, so we're dealing with two arms-length parties here, and certainly that's something that could have been put in, and you're just saying it's not put in there. Okay, thank you. In the interest of time here, just so you know, I'm going to cut it off.
Thank you.
I could do a filibuster, but you're going to stop me anyway.
Thank you, sir.
All right, well, unfortunately, we're at the...
I just, I have a quick question, just on what we were talking about before.
Is it one question?
It's two questions.
Well, that, it's quick, quick questions.
I just wanted to ask...
You had to put your name.
Jen Ashkar, 21 Spring Valley Drive. I just wanted to ask you, if you built that disposal field today, brand new, how many feet from a category one stream would it have to be? What's the buffer?
Do you know?
That's environmental issue typically.
You don't know how many feet that would have to be?
That was from the other witness.
Planning board, we just approved this across the street, right, at Hondo State, how many feet from the category one stream, Wes Fagan, did it have to be? 300 feet. How many feet is that disposal field from the category one stream?
It's not 300, but...
It's 100.
Okay.
So when you say you're bringing the current system up to current standard, I mean, the existing system up to current standards, are you moving the disposal field so that it will be meet the 300-foot category one stream buffer?
We were talking about operational standards. So the way the plant operates and the quality of the effluent and the discharge is being brought up to current standards, not the location.
So you're using the grandfather clause, that you're allowed to leave that. That's an old clause from like the 70s, right? That's no longer acceptable in current practice, am I correct?
It's like any time a law is passed, you have something that's allowed at the time, before the law was passed, you're allowed to continue it. So, for example, if you had, if you had an addition on your house that was 15 feet from the property line, and they changed the ordinance, it says it has to be 20 feet, you don't have to go rip off five feet of your house, do you? No.
I understand that.
So that we're allowed to continue.
Can the planning board require that they meet the current standard?
No, no, this is what I'm trying to explain, right, yeah.
I understand, I just want to ask the question, because can they voluntarily meet the current standard?
They could voluntarily do whatever they want, but they don't, it was a question if they have to, or if they want to.
Okay. So can you ask that they voluntarily meet the current standards instead of standards from 1970s?
Well, look...
Can you both know, so that with the provision that they have to meet the current standards in order to achieve a yes vote?
Well, that's, that's...
The planning board does not right now.
Thank you.
Do what right now?
Who are you?
I am the board planner. This is a redevelopment plan that's been put in place. The applicant has to, I mean, the board has to abide by the redevelopment plan. This is an applicant that's not requesting any variance relief from the redevelopment plan. The board is limited in what kind of conditions they can ask.
Okay, so they can't ask for them to meet that condition, but you, a developer could in good faith meet what the current standard is, which is...
[coughs]
...any other standard. Okay. And then my other question is...
Can you hear me?
My other question is, what, who, did you include effluent from any future EMS building in your calculation?
No, but if they want to connect, they're permitted to connect, and we'll have to deal with it once the building is designed and figure out what the flow is.
Okay, so deal with it after the fact. Thank you.
All right. I think, I think we're going to stop now. No, what's that? No, we're good, because it's 10 o'clock, 10:08, we still have another, someone else that we have to bring on at some point.
In the old days...
No, Roberta, please sit down. Thank you.
The county used to be a co-sign co-permittee in the old days for all these packaged plants.
Can you please sit down? Thank you, you spoke, thank you.
We have a bit of business to attend to.
Right. So I guess we're going to have to continue, carry to another, another date. Okay. Well, we got to ask the applicant, you know, do you want to carry this? Do we have anything available?
December what?
We have December 2nd and December 16th available.
Yeah, so 16th. Does the 16th work for you guys?
If I could have a minute just to confirm...
Sure.
You prefer the 16th, is, how about the...
December 2nd and December 16th.
Okay.
All right, well, we're asking the 16th. Give them one more time. And I'm going to...
We knew this was it. I knew it was going to be like...
Yeah.
Good, see you, good night.
Hmm.
We may have similar issues with storm waters and grandfathering.
No.
Or permitted to comply with the current rules in certain ways. And I don't think that's meant in words. Because with us, they're saying only grandfathering with storm waters. When you're producing impervious, nobody else does that, because they're non-existing sites.
December 16th?
Yeah. You know, I got to keep you. What, the 16th?
16.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you for the time. Well, because we want all of our experts here, we'll have to make it December 16th.
That'd be fine, that actually works for us.
That's works for us.
Kate, right? Kate, you're good the 16th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, do we get a... Yeah.
Yeah, Bob, Ed, are you guys available the 16th? Okay.
We're all good for 16th?
Yeah. Hey, Craig, I'll make sure you're around, right? You'll be around, okay, all right. All right, so we got to make them a motion?
Motion.
Someone want to make, yeah, someone want to make a motion, the further Carrie, the further notice the 16th?
I'm sorry, who motioned? And Mr. Ackerson, second?
Guys, if you're going to talk, please go outside, we still have other business.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just for the record, 23 Main Street was carried for December 16th without further notice, thank you.
All right, so I guess at this time we go through the minutes, right? Okay. All right, so we have the minutes from 10:21, 25...
Not your people, just you.
Any comments, any comments or concerns? Otherwise, motion and second, please.
Which one are we on?
October 9th.
Motion.
Eligible to vote, Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
And Mr. King? Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Ackerson? And Mr. Silberman?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes for October 21st, 2025, were successfully approved.
All right, and right now, we got to go through the resolutions, right? Okay, real quick. Resolution 2025-07, Chabad Jewish Center of BCC, Inc.
Okay.
Wes, oh, all right. Everyone, please, we're still trying to finish the meeting, so, all right. Resolution 2025-09, Hondo Cemetery, PB 2025-B, 900 Hondo Road, Hondo Block 16, Lot 1, minor site plan approval with variance. Have a motion to accept the resolution? Motion, second?
I'll second. I'm sorry, who motioned?
Tom.
Mr. King, thank you. Eligible to vote on this resolution, Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
And Mr. Fagan?
This is Chabad? No, no.
No. This is Hondo Cemetery.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Plausas?
Yes.
And Mr. Silberman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, Hondo Cemetery, PB 2025-B, was successfully approved.
Okay, we got resolution...
I would say, I would say like... 20% of the questions are actually good.
Ready?
Go ahead.
All right, resolution 2025-08, Middletown, Hondo Professional LLC, PB-2025-C, commonly known as 2080 State Highway 35, and designated as Block 51, Lot 11, as depicted on the tax map in the township of Hondo, Bolksey, Varian's, to replace an existing freestanding sign with a new freestanding sign. We have a motion to accept the resolution?
Moved.
You can't, even if you're not here, you can still motion, you can, you cannot vote, but you can motion.
We need a second.